We're gonna get.
Wait till Dan.
Yes.
I'm trying to, you know, the mayor's there.
It's nine o'clock, but we're gonna give Zoom a couple of minutes to catch up. Great. A good morning. It's Thursday, May 30th, 9:00 AM, and I'll call the Board of County Commissioners Workshop to order noting all three commissioners are present. We're going to start with Potts and Associates for Legislative Update in a second, but first I'd like to make a short announcement. I would like to make note that workshops are an important part of work tool for the county commissioners. There's limited time with public meeting laws that we can get together and work through issues. This time is important to the board. As such, we do not take public comment or questions at workshops. Behavior in a business setting is a personal matter and social responsibility. To conduct our meeting and accomplish work, a tone of professionalism is asked for. That being said, please conduct yourself accordingly. If we experience poor behavior, you will be asked to leave the room. I would like to thank staff and our partners for the untold hours and thoughtful work that has gone into this subject. I stand behind everyone who has worked on the document, produced for these discussions, and the quality of their work. Uh, thank you. So.
I have a question, if I may. Where was that on Tuesday during the board appointment?
Excuse me, Mr. Christopher, we're not gonna digress. We're gonna stick to the subject. So we're at Potts and Associates now. So I am. Is Zach there? No, Zach yet. So we can give him a minute. If not, we may have to just catch up with him another time.
Give him one more minute.
Sure.
Nothing yet.
Okay, thank you. Have you seen Mayor Marla online yet? I see Catherine. Okay. Okay. I know Zach from Potts and Associates. Well, it's, uh, he's five minutes late almost, so should we move forward? Okay. So we'll begin, um, with our agenda for discussions on, um, the Corrections and Jail report that we received. So we have a staff update.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'll make a brief opening statement, then we can just get into the conversation. So as we're all aware, on March 29th, the Commissioners, a majority of the Commissioners made a motion, um, authorizing staff to immediately move forward with, also if necessary, contract with NORCOR to provide jail services under RCW. In the motion read by Commissioner Anderson, there was other elements of that which would follow a decision today on, um, a path forward. So I look at the decision on the 29th as the what. Today, we're giving you the how. And there's four scenarios in there on how to move forward. And it staffs hope, thought that if that's narrowed down to an option, then from that, we would, um, move forward with the other elements in the motion, which would be supplemental budget, transition plan timelines. And, um, it just didn't seem efficient use of time to develop that for four different scenarios. So that would immediately follow a decision today, should one be made or when a decision is made. My name's on the report as the director. Jen deserves all the credit. She's getting the credit. She deserves the credit. Any criticism of this report should be directed at me, the director. Jen's done an amazing job on this, and I stand behind it, and I stand behind her.
Thank you.
Jen, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. So where would we like to start? Mr. Anderson.
I, I have questions throughout, sorry, my phone not on. I have questions throughout the document. I would like to be able to work this just like I work any budget issue. Page by page. There might be a lot of pages I don't have questions on, but then we would fast forward to the next page that I do have questions on. And hopefully, if I get my questions answered, I would be able to then make an informed decision.
Okay. Good.
Hey, would you like me to start?
Sure.
If I can preface. Um. The forecasted budgets within this, um, report are, are projections of an unknown. Um, budgets are ever evolving, even our own, the moment we adopt it also changes, um, through supplemental budgets, but the moment it's adopted, we always know that there's changes. So each forecasted bu- budget, understand that it could go up, could go down, might have to be modified as we work through whatever decision it is that the board chooses to make.
Thank you.
Uh, let's start on page six. Second paragraph, 21, 21 through 2024. Speaking about the 2021 budget with the known inflator, is that comment, uh, aimed at, um, the $10.5 million landfill estimate? That's a very sugar-coated way to put that. Let's go to, uh, page seven. Uh, let's go with, um, about two-thirds of the way down the page under Sheriff Jail Budget to actual middle of that paragraph that starts with the Sheriff's General Fund. Midway through that paragraph, there's a sentence that says, since 2021, the sheriff has only expended an average of 32% of the jail budget, leaving an average of 67,000 a year available for allocation. Is that, you, you're stating that the sheriff has only expended an average of 32% of his budget?
32% of the jail budget. You missed that.
Of the jail budget.
Of the jail budget, correct. Underspending the jail budget. Overspending patrol. Mostly patrol, some years admin, um, and other areas. Therefore, the jail budget having to subsidize those other areas, other sub-department budgets within the overall jail fund.
Right. So I want kind of clarification for this. So if the jail budget is 1.8 million, roughly, and they only expend an average of 32% of that, you're saying that of the 1.8 million, they're only spending, let's say, on average, 600 grand around the jail, and the rest of it's going elsewhere?
Those are not accurate numbers, but yeah, but yeah, they're underspending.
32% is 600 grand.
No, 32% of the whole. Whole budget, 32% is what is allocated to the jail.
Yeah, 35% is allocated to the jail of that 35%.
Hey, so it's the way you worked it that hasn't got it confused.
32 of it. So they're underspending by 3% in that sub-department's budget.
May I, uh, ask a question on that? Was that taking into account, uh, the medical expenses, um, over those, over those years that did not get reallocated back to that?
No, this is only the actuals spent.
Yes. And so if we reallocated those actuals back, it could be not 3% that wasn't being spent. It could be less than that. It would be less than that, correct?
If those actuals were spent in the years that they were.
Rather than us paying them today, if we paid the bills when we got them or when they were accrued, then we would have been spending a greater portion of the jail's budget. Thank you.
They needed increased transfers to cover the cost of the patrol and other sub-departments that were being funded by that available money.
Right.
Uh, okay, let's move on to 18, or sorry, 15. Which essentially we're talking about NORCOR's medical. So. I guess I, I was provided documents that make me wonder if we did a comparison of NORCOR Corrections Deputy Arrested on Sexual Abuse. Inmate dies, uh, different inmate dies. Juvenile treatment, um, over there. Have we looked at the? Did any kind of comparison with the number of issues at NORCOR, say, in the last 10 years per inmate capita? So we have a percentage to compare that with the number of issues at our jail percentage, uh, to show whether they've had more litigation problems per inmate capita than we have.
No.
Were you provided information from Sheriff's Department in order to make that comparison?
No.
And we did have discussions, uh, with NORCOR about the event and the reviews and the outcomes.
Yes.
Yes.
And they were substantially different.
Yes.
What we're facing.
Let's go to 16, bottom of the page. Says for Clickedec County Adults in Custody with Orders of Company, transportation would be arranged from NORCOR to a Goldendale Holding Cell in order for Eastern State Hospital to complete an assessment. So I guess my question of this is our recent issue of Ms. George that Eastern State didn't have a bed. What in this scenario happens if we had NORCOR? And they said she needs out of here, back to your local county holding cell until she gets to Eastern. But you can't get her in Eastern. Does that mean she be, our holding cell becomes a jail? Or does that mean we release?
I, the order of the, um, competency would come from the judge, and I believe that would be a judge decision.
And I don't know what they currently do at, at the jail here. Uh, I know there's two state hospitals, Eastern and Western, whether Western's another option.
Right, but in the Paula George case, neither one of them had a bed.
I'm not gonna address a case that's in potential litigation in any fashion.
Well, I'm just curious what we would do with that person under this scenario.
And again, I think that's kind of out of our realm. That relies on the judges and the judicial system.
Just so we're clear, what you were talking about at the bottom of this page was just doing the competency evaluation.
Correct. It cannot be done, Eastern cannot go, um, into Oregon to be able to do that evaluation or has a dedicated, uh, correctional officer that only deals with arranging transportation across the US. So that person would then call Goldendale, um, in whatever capacity that the board chooses to set the structure up with, um, to arrange that transportation so that we can get those adults in custody here into a holding cell at the ti- in the timeframe that Eastern has arranged to come down here to be able to do that.
I think it addresses the issue that we've heard that, uh, if they're housed in NORCOR, they would lose access to state services. Eastern can't cross state lines. So if they can, um, pick them up here, and they said it can often be three days to a week before that is set up and they, you know, they come to pick them up or do the assessment, they said as long as they're in.
That's kind of, that's kind of my question is, we, we have a holding cell. Is there, is this a holding cell for 24 hours until they can get to NORCOR? Or are we actually holding for three weeks and it's actually becoming a jail?
Well, that would be up to.
Why we wait for, uh.
What the board chose to do, but the transportation would, in the way I would see it, transportation coordination would happen so that it's within a 24-hour window so that there is nobody just hanging out in those holding cells for days on end.
Right, but in a case where Eastern, which happens a lot, says there's no bed.
Well, because Eastern would be coordinating with Eastern or Western about when they would be able to come down and do the evaluation or when, when they have a bed available to be able to pick up those adults in custody.
And one of the options is 24/7 holding facility, you know?
Right, I'm just questioning whether it's gonna be a holding facility, which is one day, two day over the weekend until they can see a judge or for three weeks.
It really boils down to organization and planning. So if, if there is 24-hour holding here, there's somebody who has an order of competency. The coordination with Eastern, Eastern says we can come down next week um, at this date and time. Okay. Coordinate with NORCOR's transportation. Okay, next week, this is their open window. Make arrangements to be able to go have somebody go pick them up within that open window so that they are here when Eastern is available to pick them up.
Said they normally would give us two to three days' notice, so you just have to arrange for the person to be here.
So we're really talking about two separate issues here. One is the competency evaluation, which would involve a transport up, um, to do, get the competency evaluation for being sent to Eastern. They would likely go back to NORCOR until a bed can be found. It's not like they come down, do the evaluation, then take them back with them.
Correct.
So. Let's go with page 19.
19?
19.
Yeah.
Which is pretty much the scenario cost analysis. And you have up here at the top, current jail, as is under KCSO. You're anticipating the year-end at 2.5 million dollars.
Yes.
Which we're gonna dabble into that number throughout the day. But on page 24, at the bottom, you have the 2024 forecasted actuals at 2.3 million. Why, why is it different? Should be the same number, correct?
For option one, where are you looking at below?
Uh, top, top of here, that says it's gonna be 2.5 million dollars is the anticipated budget for this year.
Yes.
Based on your numbers. And then if you fast forward to page 24, it says 2024 forecasted actual budget, and at the bottom, it says 2.3. So if this is the forecasted actual, and this is the forecasted actual, why are those numbers not the same?
I'd have to verify within my working document.
Uh, you could see my argument that they should be the same number because we're talking about the same thing, right?
No.
First off, I don't think that there's an argument, and I wouldn't, um. No, I would not immediately say that without going to my working document to check my notes.
But there's a, there's a, a difference between current jail under KCSO, and that's, that's your baseline, right?
Yeah.
No changes.
Oh, okay, so option 24 is option one. 24 is option one. That's not under KCSO.
It's under NORCOR.
It's under NORCOR, 100%.
So the, the difference would be is, is if you go 100% with NORCOR, you, can you explain the difference between the low and the high and, and what creates that difference?
Um, I can, I can explain a couple of things. First, in order to address the forecasted year-end budget, um, what? How I did that was taking the current burn rate through quarter one, applying that for the rest of the year, adding in known, um, expenses that I am aware of, um, into, into those numbers as well. And then the low and the high would be transitionary costs, depending on option shows.
And I can't go into too much detail because we're in active collective bargaining and it'd be an unfair labor practice. We have our initial, um, offer to the union for transition costs, and they've countered. And there's been no further discussion pending, uh, scenario choice by the commissioner so that we can conclude that. So we can't presume what that cost will be while we're in active bargaining. So I've explained to the union how this was presented. So the highs and the lows would cover, um, the offer and the counteroffer, uh, because we cannot assume or presume what the outcome will be. And, and so it's presented as if those were the two only options. And typically with an offer and a counteroffer, that provides the, um, the framework for the further discussions. So we had to address it that way, otherwise potentially being unfair labor practice to present you a document with the assumption of what that was gonna be.
Wait, wait.
Okay, I'm off to page 21.
I still have questions on this. I think this is one of the most important pages, uh, we're probably gonna spend a lot of time on. So I'm trying to, to understand this, this properly is, is that, uh, when we made the motion to negotiate with the unions, the purpose of that was so that we could understand what our high and low expenses are so that we could look at the actual costs, correct? While we cannot get delve into details, what we're doing is we're putting sideboards for the discussion in order, uh, looking at the cost benefit analysis.
I made the assumption that they wouldn't rescind their counter and, and, and come back with a higher one, though I guess they could, potentially unfair labor practice. The union's well aware of how I've presented this, and they seemed okay with that. But, uh, yeah, so let's put sideboards on the low end and the high end based on the information we have so far.
Okay.
Things can change, but I wouldn't expect it.
I just wanted to make that very clear, uh, for the, the public who's read this. It was like, why is there such a wide swing and, and you didn't make, you know, in, inside it, it's not very clear because of course we don't wanna get into.
If we'd have built the assumptions around our initial offer, that would, at base level, be wrong. And the other end, it would be an unfair labor practice.
Correct. Thank you for your answer, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, off to 21, which is, uh, forecasted budget currently this year. I, I have a question on some of these numbers. Number one is the second line, which is jail overtime, says averages 12% of actual wages, and you're forecasting it at 133,000. When I go back and look through our budgets for 21, 22, 23, 24, and it shows me the actuals for the previous year, I come up with 98,000, 73,000, 83,000, 92,000. I guess I'm trying to figure out how you came from anywhere between 70 to 90, which is the historical average, and I could see anywhere from 70 to 90 being over there. I'm kind of curious how we got 40 grand higher to 133.
There are multiple earning codes within, um, the jail's budget and patrol's budget, as well as emergency management's budget that is not labeled overtime, but is actually overtime, holiday scheduled hours worked, those types of things, according to the union contract, gets paid at an overtime rate. So it's not gonna come up in that singular overtime line, if that's the only one you are looking at.
Okay, I will defer that question, but we'll come back to this topic on a different page. Cause I also had a question with the overtime benefits number.
It's simply a per- a percentage of a projection of averages.
And I'm not gonna play in the minutia. Uh, let's hop down to professional services.
Same page.
Same page, which is about halfway down. The title on the left says other services and charges. Uh, bars number, what we would call 4100 jail professional services. Same kind of scenario. I show in 2022, they had 49,000, 2023, they had 45,000. You're anticipating that up to 80 this year, but then back down to 44 in future years.
Yes.
But why is that 40 grand higher this year?
Uh, because their current burn rate in the first three months, or the first three months, they have already spent $6,700. So when you divide that by three and you apply that to get the burn rate to go across, if they continue to trend at that burn rate by month, it will equal that 80,000.
But it's entirely possible that they had something that they had to pay for at the beginning of the month that they don't pay for at the end of the year.
Uh, professional services contract, um, that one actually is, um, has a contract for our medical services within that. So that's a standard rate, um, and then EMS.
Right, but if it's going up $40,000, you would think there'd be a new contract involved. There's something new if it's going up 40 grand.
That's. Uh, there were multiple things I just listed in there. So there is one contract that is a steady, um, dollar figure. That's roughly that $40,000. The rest of it is other professional services. The one right off the top of my head is EMS services to the jail. Um, so, yes, we could have no more, no more, um, 911 calls to the jail and get an ambulance there. Absolutely could happen, and that could come down, but this is just a projection off of their current expenses. So what they are currently expending, if they continue to expend at that rate, that is the projected year end.
That's why we call it a forecast. It's not titled actual, and this is the same scenario and the same formulas we use when we forecast all budgets. Quarterly going forward is we have to look at the burn rate, and yeah, sometimes things are front-loaded, sometimes things are backloaded, and we typically know that. But that's the basis of a forecast.
I think of this as IT, and usually whenever we come in and have those discussions, you make it very clear that this is, we're, when you're giving us our quarterly updates, this is higher than, because this is when, you know, the, the subscriptions kick in and there's an explanation of that. And so I understand that, that you're doing, dealing with options, uh, having to deal with averages, looking at current expenses. And I understand that. I, I do think that I took that as a note because it showed 80, and then it dropped back down to 44 in the future years. And so that's why I had that question as well.
And, and from what I could tell, there was nothing like an annual subscription that I could highlight and be like, this is a one-time-a-year purchase. So I had to roll with however they're currently operating.
We might find out next year that it is the 120 number, or you might find out that, no, it's actually back at the 60, which is.
First, because it's just a projected off of the current, um, expense.
Inmate medical.
Yes.
Um, historically 50 grand in 2020, 52, 56. Um, you have it at 269. Is that all of the backdated bills along with what they're forecasted to spend this year in the budget? How did you get to that number?
One, their current burn rate, um, of inmate medical this year, with the exception of I pulled out a 2022, um, Kitata Valley Hospital, um, invoice that was paid in the first quarter of this year. So I pulled that out to try and get more like actual quarter one burn rate.
Did you pull out the rest of the KVH bills for 21, 22 that won't be paid in second quarter, third quarter, whatever, because we're paying them now?
I was getting to that point. So I, in order. I was getting to that point. So I, in order to get an accurate Q one burn rate, I pulled out the twenty twenty two invoice that was paid. Um, that's the one I could highlight and see. From there, I took that burn rate and applied. Now, what I added into that was the outstanding invoices that I was aware of, um, that would need to be paid by contract in order to get the year end forecasted projection. From that, to get the future years, what I took was KVH's, um, information of the actual billed invoices by year. Since, since we haven't been historically great about getting those invoices paid within that year, the data in our system is skewed. So I went to KVH and got the data from their billing system of what each year our rate would be annually on what charges that they have.
But, and, and I agree with the information being skewed. My question is, when they give you the information on total bills for the county, wouldn't some of those bills be reimbursable through Golden Dale?
Still be ours.
The expense is still going to be.
It's still a part of the expense.
There will be a revenue to offset some of that.
It, it could be a revenue, but the expense would still remain the same.
So I guess my curiosity is this. If on medical, we spend fifty, sixty grand, historically, that's what we paid, whether there's back bills unpaid, whatever on the side. How do we get to future at two twenty?
Because historically our medical bills, this, this line item has not been budgeted appropriately.
Right.
Um, historically, our medical bills are significantly higher than that.
Hundred thousand plus.
So where are they getting paid for in the budget when it says actuals over here? Or are they just not getting paid?
They're not getting paid, sir.
Right, but if they're not getting paid, we know what that number is for the last three years. It's a hundred and forty thousand dollars or whatever the number is.
But if you look at the actual bills that KVH had, it exceeds a hundred thousand and it's increasing every year.
And for each future additionally to that, um, across the board with these forecasted budgets, I did increase with CPI, just threw in a CPI number so that I was actually trying to get closer to what potentially each future year could be. So twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, we'll have a CPI added to it.
So there is what, eh, when you went to KVH and you're using their number, did you use the number of what they're, they're, what they send in the bill, but yet we only pay fifty percent of it?
Use the fifty percent.
Fifty percent, okay. Thank you.
Just for clarification too, this county does not net lines. So we might be able to get reimbursed for some, some of the costs, but we do not net it out in the expense budget. The expense is still ours.
Right.
Inmate meals.
Yes.
Historically, we're sixty thousand, sixty eight thousand this year. My guess is seventy five. You're forecasting hundred twenty six. Now you're saying you're doing your forecast based off current burn rates for the quarter. Well, it shows for the quarter, they've only spent ten grand. So technically they, if you're figuring it out based on quarter, it should be forty grand. How did you get from the hundred and, or from seventy grand to a hundred and twenty six on this?
I would have to go back to my notes, my working document, just to validate some information.
Uh, next line, jail communication. Twenty twenty two, they spent eleven thousand, twenty three, they spent eighty nine hundred. Um, so far in the first three months of this year, they spent nine hundred and ninety three dollars. Uh, you have a forecasted to come in at fifty nine thousand.
I have a forecasted to come in at eleven, eleven thousand nine hundred.
Oh, so the budget is fifty nine thousand is what's in the budget and forecast. Well done. That would be a can issue.
Do we know why that was forecasted to go up so much? Is that the, um, cameras or do we have an idea?
Like, I'm going to repeat myself of, I.
I've budgeted that. I don't know what that is.
I, yeah, I'm trying to understand.
I didn't add anything into that. My formula across the board is how that came up.
The line we missed when we were going through the budget, my, because I don't have a note on that in my, uh, my twenty twenty four, and I would have had a note on that. I would have had a note.
Okay.
And I didn't have a note.
All right. Good question.
Um, it's, I, because that was kind of entertaining going back through my past budgets at the notes. Um, sticking, um, the jail insurance, did, were they one of the many that didn't have insurance in part of their budget? And so now we're adding insurance to everybody's budget. Is that what's going on with that increase?
No, this would be the, their portion of the.
One point four million dollar, right, but it's, we, it, it says we only budgeted fifteen hundred. Is that, I mean, they're not the only ones that did that, correct?
I cannot speak to that without having a budget book. I, no, I can't, without my budget book in front of me, I'm not going to try to get at that.
We didn't put that number in there.
Did not put that budget and number in there. So, um, I'm not one hundred percent sure without going to get my budget book. But this would be the insurance cost specific to the jail.
But we know that the insurance cost specific to the jail, not fifteen hundred, we would line item of those budgets in there at that time, if I remember correctly.
As, well, whether we were going to pull everything out of the general fund or not, we had discussed that, um, this would I put this in here because it's still a cost of operating the jail.
Right, but it, I, I guess that's all I'm trying to say is yes, we all understand it's a cost of operating the jail. And I think we made a determination during the last budget cycle that we were going to uh, better analyze those costs to make sure each department was paying their fair share, even though it all comes out.
Oh, I did that. I, that, that was done in last year's.
And we're going to put those in each department.
So that, that was.
Wasn't in there, it's now going to be in there.
Now I understand where you're going with this. So no, in twenty twenty three, we did that. I reevaluated how the insurance was being allocated. And we went off, I, um, went off LNI hours and actual square footage footprint.
Right.
In order to, yes, that's already been done for.
So my point is this isn't a seventy one thousand dollar increase that he's now spending that he didn't spend before. This is the insurance cost. It's always been there.
Yes.
Well, it's now being attributed to his budget that wasn't in the past.
No, it wasn't in the, it wasn't.
No, elected official or director has the option to spend it or not spend it. It's allocated.
Right, I'm just saying, was it accounted for in last year's?
Right.
One point eight million dollar budget.
It, in, insurance has always historically hit everybody's departmental budget. We had discussed actually pulling the general funds, um, insurance lines out because of the timing of, and just pay for it out of a non-departmental budget. Because of the timing of the insurance, um, payment comes in, in the last quarter of the year. And a lot of the general fund budgets, um, are so lean, courts budgets, they come in within a hundred dollars of their budget year after year. So in order to get to receive an invoice in the quarter four that is potentially twenty percent higher than anticipated, that's going to blow their budgets. We're going to have a lot more issues in that fourth quarter supplemental. So we had discussed pulling those out in the general fund and just doing one lump sum payment, but maintaining the accuracy of how they're allocated by department. We just have not done that yet.
That's, that's kind of where I'm going from. It's hard to compare growth overall within a department or an office. Because I'm seeing twenty twenty two, um, the insurance line is sixty eight hundred dollars. Um, twenty twenty three, the insurance line is ninety thousand dollars.
No, I can.
Twenty twenty four, it's back down to nothing again. It's sort of like, it's there, it's not there, it's there, it's not there.
The sheriff's office has the, has historically allocated their insurance allotment to different subdepartments and different funds. How the office does that is unknown to me. This number is the number that, and the allocation method that the auditor has as the standard across the board, and that's what will be audited.
On the square foot, last number of employees.
Yes.
Got it.
So how they distribute that throughout their budget, I do not know. But it does happen.
Based on auditor's policy, um, in order to, to do that, that's not actually based on the amount of risk that one department brings versus another. It's, it's averaged in essence.
Risk and historical claims are not taken into, taken into consideration to get this insurance allocation is strictly LNI hours, which would be employees' hours worked, um, as well as square footage.
Thank you.
So that's all I had on that page. We're now moving on to page twenty two, which is the Norcore, hundred percent Norcore option. I guess I need clarification because there was, uh, questions asked that were not in this document. I do see that you write in here additionally, Norcore would need at least six months to get the required stuff done. Um, but also moving forward to the question that wasn't answered, uh, under steps to make this happen, uh, to transfer to a Norcore only, um, the team um, says that it would, uh, need to move for legislative changes regarding behavioral health competency. Have we asked the prosecutor or the state attorney general? They answer, to answer the question on whether it's legal that we transport our adults and or juveniles down there. I, I know I read in here, oh, Clark County has a contract with, that's not the legal question. There was a legal question asked and I'm curious if there's been a legal answer given.
I'm a little confused by the question because you just said, um, if we can transport juveniles to Norcore and we have been doing that for twenty plus years.
Does that make it legal because it's been being done for twenty years? No.
When I talk to state agencies, and, and I talked to a number of them, you know, the, the initial issue to them was they can't cross state lines.
I, there's, there was a legal question that I posed in the original thing that I want a legal interpretation on whether we can transport inmates across the state line. Now, if the prosecutor's willing to answer the question, great. If he's not, we need to ask the state attorney general because I am under the belief that we may have been breaking the law for twenty years by handling juveniles across the line. So unless one, somebody here has a legal degree.
That you clearly says that we can contract with a neighboring county and a neighboring state.
Is it, um, everything booking, if booking was maintained now.
The answer is nobody's got a legal answer to the question that was posed is essentially, we all have our legal interpretations. But nobody's got a legal answer from a legal attorney or a judge or a state attorney general.
Hence why this, um, timeline says one to two years at minimum.
That's the next question is what exactly is this legislative changes needed?
Well, first off, Eastern can't cross state lines. That will, and, um, we cannot use Oregon behavioral health credentials for Washington inmates. So that would have to be a legislative change.
Well, we know OSP can't.
Eastern didn't say they weren't willing to go to the DOWs. They said they weren't able to go to the DOWs.
And, and is that due to the law or is that due to policy and rule? And do we have that answer?
Crossing state lines?
About picking, if they're, if they are a Washington, like they are a Washington resident, they are, you know, housed in a what, you know.
They might be certified by the board of health for their profession in their state.
Uh, but I'm talking about just the eastern competency, uh, because if, if Eastern can cross and do the competency evaluation for a Washington, uh, resident who is going to be seen in a Washington court, is that a RCW or is that under policies and procedures because they've never had this occur before? And is, do we know if it's legislation or is it potential up for, um, just a change in policy? We don't know that.
I, I, we don't know that. Um, when it came to the healthcare authority, I believe I included my email there. Um, I still have not heard back from them because they are working through that because this would be something, it's, it's a new program for them. And this is something that they didn't anticipate. They didn't think about. So they're going back to policy, um, and reworking that before they come back to me. Second of all, those are great questions. Except for it became too time consuming to really dive into all of those details. If this was something the board was not going to go with immediately.
Right, but my question on a legal opinion from our prosecutor who's willing to put it in writing, that it's his legal opinion.
Sure, I can answer for the prosecuting attorney.
Or going to the state attorney general that they believe that it's legal to cover our butt, to make sure we can put inmates across affects option number one, but it also affects option number two.
Well, and out of professional courtesy, I, I did not feel that it was appropriate for me to go to the attorney general.
Talking to, to Commissioner Anderson's comment, as I talked to three, I think through maybe four different state agencies. I'm not speaking for them or the attorney general. I generally got, well, that's a good question. Um, and, and I think three of them had kicked part of those up to the attorney general. But they all seem at the level I was talking about, which is various levels up to director level, that as long as the service was provided in Washington, there was not an issue. They couldn't cross state lines, but the inmates could be brought back here and they didn't see that as.
Option one is in this packet because that was the motion of the board.
That was the motion of the board. I understand. I'm bringing this up now because my legal question on, not only is it legal to haul adults across state lines, also affects whether this county's been doing it legally or not for the last X number of years with juveniles. Because that question's been posed to me by somebody who is an attorney.
Well, I think so. The, we don't have to answer that. I think if we've been doing this for twenty years, that means there's been three, four plus prosecuting attorneys that have signed those contracts and signed those agreements and just assuming.
Norcore attorneys.
And Norcore attorneys that, um, city attorneys.
So, so let's not check. Is that the answer I'm hearing from everybody or should we?
No, of course not.
That's why it takes a year.
That's why it takes a couple of years to get through that.
Well, I'm just saying that question is also a question for option two that I hope we check before we do option two.
Well, option two would be different. Norcore is not booking those adults in custody.
It's still a matter of whether we can transport across state lines is the legal question. So, okay, so apparently nobody wants to ask the question. We'll move on.
Commissioner, one, Commissioner, I think we have addressed the question. Once an option is picked, once a scenario is picked, then we'll follow that scenario down and get legal opinions. The prosecuting attorney's office is busy. Um, we haven't submitted some of these in writing, so, um, we have committed some, um, but they're busy. Everybody's busy. Once we narrow it down from four lanes to one, then we can put together a transition and part of that transition will be getting specific answers to those kinds of questions. Uh, did.
It's really challenging to put forth hypothetical situations.
Right.
For a legal opinion.
Or to ask attorney general for an opinion on something that's hypothetical.
What?
I, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've done an outstanding job. You are in the finance department and you are at being asked questions that are far away from finance. And you have done an amazing job putting this together, trying to get the answers. I know we've asked a lot of questions of a lot of different agencies and we've got one answer. Sometimes we've got, well, that's a good question. And so we have to assume in those instances, the answer is no, or potentially not until we find a different answer. Some of the answers could save us a lot of money. Some of them might be very easy changes, you know, if it's a policy decision by a state agency that we don't, we don't go across the county, the border because we've never had Washington residents housed across the border that are actually either booked in Washington or seeing, seen in Washington. I mean, it's not that hard to drive across the border, you know, in reality. So a lot of these decisions, as we work through them, it's going to take time. You've done an outstanding job, more than we've ever asked of, of an individual with underneath our department to do this. In most instances, you would bring in a consultant who's got thirty years of experience trying to reimagine jails in Washington state or something like this in order to answer these questions. You've been doing it nights and weekends and everything else. And so thank you for the time that you've put in. I know that we don't have all the answers. We knew we weren't going to come into this situation where we'd have a hundred percent of the answers. There's very few situations in which we make a decision in which we have all of the answers. Um, I do believe that the question is good. I do think that the question, um, and we, we have put in. I do believe that the question is good. I do think that the question and we we have put in those those requests for PA opinion requests. We've all probably had discussions with the PA on the side on whether or not RCW seventy forty eight zero nine zero. Is applicable in this situation, which, you know, it's usually pretty obvious. The RCW is pretty clear. But then there's also the nuance behind it. And when we need to nail those nuances, we need to write those PA opinion requests.
But I think in a general term, the general response is I is which kind of led to option two in in some respects. When I would talk to state agencies. Option to address some of their issues. Well, we don't have cross state lines. So for the for the partnership with them, this seemed to address some of those issues. About, well, if the service is still in the state of Washington, then it's not an issue. I actually said, would that work for you under our current arrangements? And at their level, they said, yeah, they thought they would. But they, of course, like Jen and I, aren't the final decision makers. But. So one of them summed it up. So basically they're arrested on a Washington warrant, they're booked in Washington jail, they're go to Washington courts. Or just spending the night in the Dallas. And I said, well, that's kind of one way to look at it. Yeah, so. As they're trying to wrap their arms around it.
Right. And so in essence, option two was designed and created. Because we don't have the answers to all of those questions at this time. They may take time in order to get those answers.
And other reasons, including.
Yes, of course, other reasons, but that's one of the rationale for creating it because we didn't, or at least I didn't direct these four options. This is based on staff by doing your due diligence.
These options surfaced, one, by the motion, two, after numerous countless. Meetings, interviews with all of our partners, stakeholders. Anybody who would have any part in our current jail, sitting down with each and every one of them. How does it work for you? Would this work? Would this work? I I started with a. Basically a brainstorming map was in my office for weeks, actually had that lined out and just. Tried to, with everybody's input and all the interviews that we had. It really narrowed it down to the four.
I mean, basically, we could have done option one and been in compliance with the directive of the majority of the board. But it wouldn't have been realistic or implement, being able to implement it on a short term basis. Therefore, we wouldn't be doing our jobs without bringing forward other options to meet the directive of the majority of the board.
Thank you, sir.
I'm speeding right along. Page twenty four. Which is the option one forecasted budget. And we'll just start with payroll. You stated as two deputies, you stated on page twenty two.
Yes.
I'm assuming these are, are these county corrections, transport personnel? Or are these sheriff's department deputies that add to that?
Under the assumption that the entire jail was closed. Therefore, in order to get transportation back and forth, I would assume that the sheriff would need more patrol deputies. And so entry level, new hire patrol deputies is what those are.
Okay, so. You're saying for that dollar amount, we can get two step one grade, whatever, entry level. But that doesn't take into account if it's a lateral and they're not.
Those are.
Hypothetical.
I mean, I'm just saying other places we have a range. This is a.
I only have a range in areas of. Collective bargaining.
Did you take into consideration in this budget? The two new cars they would need, the two new computers they would need, the two new cell phones, the two new bulletproof vests, the two new guns. So technically, this forecasted projected dollar amount of cost is lacking all those items.
Like I said in the beginning, this is just a scenario projected amount. Dependent on.
I guess.
But could go up.
Getting is on some of these items, I will be pointing out where all those things were added, like the sheriff's. Expected expenses this year. Are all like reaching at the high end of what's possible is where we forecasted it. So there's a range and we're going to take the high end. But then on other things like this, to show what a cost savings it would be to go to Norcore at two point three million, as opposed to the sheriff's two point five. You have all these variables that we know guns, cars, computers, whatever, that aren't even accounted for. So the number is probably closer.
Only thing I added into the sheriff's actual anticipated expense was those medical expenses that I know. Are still outstanding or were at the time that I built this report with KPH. That is the only added thing in there. Otherwise, it was maintained off of their current burn rate. If they do not adjust their operational changes and reduce expenses and continue to spend at that level, that's what it would be. That is the best information I can give you.
Well, they've never spent thirty three percent more than they were budgeted.
But.
So I guess we will find out whether the two point five is an accurate number. In the first quarter of next year, when we know what they actually spent for the year. And see whether it's much closer to the one point nine or if it's the number that you have here of two point five.
Or they also haven't been paying their medical bills in their year that.
But that's like forty grand. That's not six hundred.
If I if I may. You you stated that you didn't add that in there, but it looks like here you put in there jail office office supplies of twenty thousand dollars. You also put in there the transfers out for the vehicle replacement of twelve thousand dollars. So did you, did you build in the expenses for those two deputies?
Is consistent with what it has been. So I just, I did not go in and add additional patrol vehicles. That would be a policy change. The sheriff has a pool of vehicles already, so I did not make the assumption that we would add. More vehicles to that purchasing cycle. Right now, we purchase every year in groups of three or four. I didn't add in, we would group, we would, for two deputies, would purchase four or five vehicles.
And we might take one of the new decades, stick him in the nineteen ninety seven Toyota Tacoma that the sheriff has.
I have no idea, sir. That is a lot of assumptions that would be policy decisions at the board level. Again, with this option taking two years to implement. I I wasn't going to waste my time with those. Small details, but I did add in office supplies and took a rounded figure.
I guess the reason why I'm pointing to this out is a lot of people in the in the general public are trying to point out how this is a cost savings to the budget. Oh, it's a budget savings. It's a budget savings. I guess when I'm pointing out when there's a whole bunch of zeros because we didn't put the actual number in, we don't know if it's a budget savings. It looks like it because it's two point three and not two point five, but I'm questioning that the two point five is a little skewed on the high side. And the two point three is obviously missing guns and cars and computers.
I think, I think.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
I think skewed is kind of a.
I, if I may.
Unfortunate way to look at it.
So. Well, I think the terminology used for the ten point five million dollar landfill revenue thing was an unfortunate way to terminology.
Okay, stick to stick to subject.
If 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 I may. And that two point five is on the high end. We're looking at the potential high end. We know that something would likely come in somewhere between those. On that. We we know that you you did your best and you worked nonstop trying to to get all this inputted. We also haven't made the decision on whether or not we would be going the path of hiring jail deputies or using. The Department of Corrections and hiring someone that's not a full, or sorry, a full patrol deputy. But rather being more of a transport deputy, kind of like what Norcore has. So there's, there's a bunch of different decision makings that would need to occur in order to start moving down that path. What you're doing is is trying to set the range, which it seems like you've done, and it's somewhere in between there. I understand what Commissioner Christopher is saying is that when you, when you you're saying that we're going to hire two new deputies, we need to take account of that. If we need to go in there and add some more in there, that's something that can that we can do and we can't.
Yes.
Which we would do. Point, if you select an option one, then we'd have to find out, did they need two cars and two more vests and two more firearms? Or do they have some of that? Do they not have some of that? Do they need a patrol?
Right, and I understand that, but I think.
Supplies are also.
The board would need that answer on what the budget number of said option is before they make a decision. And if the budget number that's given is lacking dollars. Because it wasn't added in, how are they supposed to, oh, it it looks like a cost savings and it's not really a cost savings. And then they've already made the decision.
Go back to the motion and the discussion on the twenty ninth, the budget wasn't the primary reason. Behind the motion.
Right, but it's it seems to have turned into that.
It's one of the things that we can talk about.
And I think the thing we're missing here is this called option. And this is not a hard line. Number one, this is what it's going to be. There's budget changes, but we have to review all the options and compare things before I can even say option one's legitimate. I I need to see all the options and discuss them.
I mean, honestly, when when governments take these kind of measures, there's usually a preliminary. And that's, you know, you, I would say this is more than a preliminary dive. You delve really deep and you've got amazing answers to these questions. Usually there's a preliminary where you start reducing, you know, you come up with, here's all the ideas out there. And then you start reducing that down into here's four options, and then you reduce it down to here's two options and here's the direction. And each time you do that, you add further specifics, you know, more specifics, more depth and more information. I wasn't assuming that this was going to be perfect when you came up with it. I assumed that we are getting within the ballpark. So that we can make decisions knowing that that cost is is a factor in the decision making process, but it's not a hundred percent of the decision making.
Correct, just like in our own budget build process.
Exactly.
Another assumption we're making is, should you narrow the field? Then we would bring on additional folks to help in the transition to answer many of these other questions. And and maybe questions that that we don't know yet. But to try and do that on four different scenarios would, we'd just be spinning our wheels for a very long time.
And the fact you did this in two months is amazing.
Yeah, and this is our base jump off. What you've done to give us this so we can discuss what's happening with the options.
That was my question.
Thank you. No, good question. Let's go with option two, which is the Norcore slash holding cell option. And again, the general public is looking at this as a budget line on the bottom. Of, oh, this expense is less than the two point five million they're forecasting the sheriff's budget to be. So I like numbers added where they need to be added, so that people can get an honest review on whether it's an expense or a savings. And in.
Clarify that my analysis is honest.
Okay, option number two. Where do you have it forecasted for overtime for the ten employees that are working in the?
I haven't built in the wages.
So it's not on a separate bars number like you have on the other.
No, because I was able to then, I actually, if you go back to the scenario option with the fiscal notes. You will see in there.
What page?
Page twenty six, right there, I actually have each line item, just like in in a wage and benefit form. Just as we budget our current budget. So the total cost of the employee actually adding in. Hours worked on holidays for every employee being conservative. Therefore, not every employee would work holidays, adding extra dollars into there. To get those dollars.
Okay, but you. I I'm fine with you adding overtime in, and I appreciate you say that you did this being conservative. Why such a drop in office supplies?
Well, we're not maintaining. In this scenario, we're only maintaining the holding cells. We're not maintaining all forty cells of. Of the jail. We're also, staff would be reduced. There's less staff. What what they need. Was really. Educated guess based on that knowledge.
Cross referencing a question. Uh, that's a good question, but it's small money, so we'll just skip it.
I'm looking at the, it's petty, but the the fuel consumed with how many trips we make with the jail. Does that accurately reflect the current costs of of the fuel? Or is some of that fuel getting put in other places?
I don't have that answer. I I have no idea.
Talked about it last year.
Allocated for hence. My spitball of twenty thousand dollars.
Just making an assumption.
With the, I actually increased the CPI inflator to ten percent on that line.
Why, I guess I would say if this option is just us operating a holding cell. Why, why do we need twenty grand in fuel for ten deputies to operate a holding cell?
Multiple of holding cells and to transport inmates back and forth for court appearance.
So these people are going to be doing the transports and not the deputies that we had in option one. Got it? Okay.
And you need multiple cells. I I think even the sheriff has testified a number of times, you need female cell and male cell. And and then I think there's a holding cell that holds.
And I would argue you're still going to have maintenance and upkeep on the cells you're not using because you don't want them to deteriorate, so.
Well, we we did have a discussion with facilities about mothballing the rest of the building and what they'd have to do and, you know, and they were looking into that as to.
Right, but I would, I would hope you would get as much Mr. Clean for the mop bucket. So the inmates can mop all forty cells and keep them clean while they're at it. So if you're dealing with supplies, I want just as much Mr. Clean as we get today.
Well, that would be on buildings and grounds, I would assume, but since they are the ones that clean facilities.
So my my question would be, this is higher level. We chose a twenty four hour holding cell. Why did we not choose a twelve hour holding cell? Can you speak to that?
Yes, we did go into this with two options of one limited hours versus twenty four hours. But after multiple discussions with our city partners, Washington, our state partners and the judges. It did not seem feasible or viable to be able to do limited hour holding. It would not work for our state partners. It would be an officer safety issue for our city partners. And then. The number of transportation back and forth. For court appearances, specifically superior court, the limited hours wouldn't have enough staff. To be able to handle those heavy court docket days.
And I think an example of that is when I talk to D B S Ps, you know, currently they don't, wouldn't have a place if they needed to do breathalyzer. In their own office to hold somebody, do the paperwork, and there's an officer say officer safety issue because that doesn't always happen in the twelve hours. We'd be open, whereas if we were had a booking facility and a holding facility, at the very least, they could, they could do it here and and there would be somebody else available.
So out of the ten employees that would be managing this situation. I know you have them listed, not really an org chart, but.
I I do not have listed in an org chart or some support staff because that would, I did list in the options of what would have. The board would have to make a decision on would be structure and of the department. And and an outline of that. I was not going to make assumptions for the board.
Based on the ten. The thought process is two people on per shift. And. So even if that makes five teams, let's say, we'll call them little teams of two since there's ten. But you're going to have a director in there, so I don't know if he's going to be a team of two. Or if you're dealing with a director, a fiscal person to manage the budgets and payroll and everything going forward. And then eight corrections for four teams, I would think that's probably more likely.
What's in my wages and benefits is corrections officers and control board operators. That's it.
Who's?
So how the board chose, if they chose this option, how the board chose to structure it would then either increase that amount. Or decrease that amount.
So, good, good point. So you don't have in this number of two point three million. You don't have a director. Or a financial person to do the budgets going forward.
No, I do not, because I would not want to make that assumption for the board. Of whether they wanted to put a director in there or if they wanted to have the sergeant, a sergeant run it.
Some directors do their own budget, some delegated to other staff. Uh, control, control board operators are not going to be watching forty cells. They're going, it's going to be, will they have capacity?
You want a control board operator to operate at one point eight million dollar budget?
No, I'm just saying.
I want a CPA.
I'm trying to answer your question. What I'm saying is there may be capacity with the jail commander or a. Commit, uh, corrections director, whatever the title is, there may be capacity there. There may be capacity with the sergeant. There may be capacity with the control bar operators. To do some of those details. So could they need some level of financial support, part time, casual, full time? I don't know. That would be determined once that option is picked, if it is picked, and we would flesh it out in a, in a. Transition and maybe it's financially best to make, to let that evolve naturally. You see what level of support they do need and not have us assume it from the beginning.
Also, we do not have CPAs in departments. Um, doing bookkeeping work. We, our CPA is our auditor. Okay, the county as a whole has the auditor's office.
Okay, then.
For that account.
Then I will clarify, I want somebody that has a background in the history and finance managing the budget.
We, and most departments does not have that. We have a bookkeeper or a clerk. Who puts together the invoices and sends it to the auditor in order to process through AP. Most departments don't enter their own AP within our financial system.
So is, is, does, does the potential existing need a, a clerical one, two or three, or a, uh. A, an accounting admin one, two or three to pick up some of that potentially?
Potentially. So hopefully if, if option two is one of the options going forward. We, as a board, decide whether we're going to let. The correction sergeant run the jail. And report to us, or if we're going to do like we do in every other department under the commissioners and have a director oversight. Even if that's the HR director being the interim director of. Code compliance, solid waste, and every other thing you were the interim director of, maybe they assign you the interim director of the jail. I would hope they would make a director of the jail, but. If we go that route, I hope we get the next document. With the number of a finance person and a manager.
Once the board makes a decision, this is the preliminary.
Okay.
Um, forecast. Once the board makes a decision, we could come back with more detail. After the board chooses a structure, an hierarchy, organizational chart. And we can get more detailed line data.
So I guess my question then lies is. How many, how many teams do we have now operating the jail? They're teams of three, but how many do we have? I'm seeing a handful of four. I'm not asking questions because they're not part of our meeting, but I'm seeing four back there. Is there any objections to four teams?
I wish I knew that answer.
And, and I don't think you can compare that with this option because I think it's.
Holding cell versus the entire jail.
Yeah.
The number of teams? I can't compare it to this.
Because of what their management will be, that'll be so different.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out how many employees it takes to work the shift that's being recommended. And cover every day of every week. Because they were.
Right. I, I did.
How many shifts it's going to take?
I, I ran, this scenario is based off a twelve and three schedule.
Right.
Your, your standard twelve and three schedule with a, with a team of two COs and a control board operator. That's what this is based on.
So how many teams would that take, whether it's a two person team or a three person team or whatever, to do that? To just operate the booking facility.
In here, I'd have to go back to my notes, but I do have it.
I guess what I'm trying to find out is how many teams, I don't care if it's two, three, twelve, whatever, how many teams does it take to provide that coverage? And then does that leave over the two individuals that are going to be needing to run transport or the part of the team that's operating the? One of the two people is now going to go.
I need to go back to my notes. Because if.
I believe it's four teams to provide the service in the jail. My question is that makes the other two. Running transports, correct? Or do you have somebody who's currently running the jail? One of them's leaving to go pick somebody up, leaving one behind in the jail.
I would have to go back to my notes within the schedule that I, I had drafted in order to be able to answer that question.
And again, I think if you picked option two, we'd reach out to corrections professionals and review this to, to answer that question.
Make sure you have enough people in the org chart to cover all the shifts, transport.
Finance.
Well, that's what my question was. I, I. Kind of surprised that's not already known.
Well, I believe I do know it. I just, it's in my notes and I do not have it in front of me. Had I got these questions ahead of time, I would have been able to be prepared.
Professional services line of this. Which is the holding facility option is back down to forty thousand, which is the historical, and I brought up earlier that you had it up at. Eighty thousand this year. Why, why would it drop back down to forty? Because of a holding cell option.
Because we would be terminating.
Are we not doing?
We would be terminating a contract with our medical services provider right now.
So we're terminating the contract with KVH?
No, our medical service provider is a, um, physician assistant.
Oh, is that the Dr. B or whatever a hero? Okay. So under this option, then, if there's no Dr. B. Uh, what do we do for somebody that's in our jail for three days? And or. A. Mentally unstable, I don't want to talk about pending litigation, a mentally unstable person that's brought back from Norcore.
Well, we would still have our behavioral health department.
Well, who would be the doctor to, to handle that person?
So. Under this scenario, things would operate as they are now. We still need medical clearance. They'd still have to go get checked before they're, they're booked into a facility. Um, from KVH if they're here, um, they would still need that mental health check if they still.
Right, but who would be the doctor B in this scenario?
I don't have a Dr. B in this scenario. I have, um, KVH because we don't need somebody twenty four seven here. Because our medical services would be at Norcore.
But what are, who are the medicals? What? So if we have inmates in our holding cell that haven't made it to Norcore yet. If they need medical, we're hauling them to Norcore.
No, we're hauling, it would be medical clear, um, clearance check out of KVH, just like it is now.
Okay, that's my point. So we need a doctor in our jail now, or a, a on-call somebody. So.
The person we use for on-call is actually the. The hospital, so why would we need a MD for holding? So.
Why do we need one now then, is my point?
Because we're, we are housing inmates here.
But we might be housing inmates for three at a time.
But you know, we don't know that on a holding facility, there may be, there may be days or where there isn't anybody held overnight or it's one person because the DOC hasn't picked them up yet. But I don't, you know, I mean, we can't, we can't hypothetically say there'll be every holding cell full twenty four seven. Uh, possibly, yeah, possibly not.
Thank you. I understand where Commissioner Christopher's coming from. I think it's not very difficult to add in here a medical expense. Um, that we may be able to contract, um, either with, uh, health department or something else for. Uh, situations that, that arise where there's a medical issue in the jail where like someone like a doctor B. Um, or someone on staff would, would need that medical. Uh, it seems like much of that would be reduced as, you know, we would have a full-time clinic down, as you were saying. Um, and that people are just coming in and going out. Um, I don't know what percentage of the population that's currently in holding receives medical attention or needs medical attention. That would be a question that we would need those, that information from the sheriff's department in order to make rational, uh, forecasted decisions.
Agreed. And should the board choose to do this and that's the direction they want to go, then we can. Outline that and put it in a forecast.
I guess this, this is, brings back the question though of. Where I think numbers were projected a little high in what the sheriff's going to spend this year, two point five million. I will. Bet anybody, any wager you want, that it comes in under two point five million.
Oh, and then that would be fantastic and wonderful and great if they did.
But we're comparing two point five million to two point three million.
But budget conservatively, I needed to go off of the same analysis of a burn rate.
Like to finish my statement. We're comparing it to the two point three of this option, so we can say it's cheaper, but in the same regard, we have absolutely zero. For holding cell, medical, professional, or KVH, or anything. Like nobody through the entire year that's in our holding cells is going to need to go to KVH. There needs to be a number there.
And if the board chose to do that, and that was, absolutely, I can, I can add that in. Uh, back to my beginning statement in regards to forecasted budgets. Once we have more directive. Those budgets can go up, they can go down depending, and. As the transition starts to happen, they will evolve. They're just like our current annual budget.
And I just, I'd like to clarify something moving forward for the room, uh, especially just for the optics of what we're working on. A lot of these are forecasted, so there are a lot of questions and we had the option going forward this week to provide questions to Jim. And, uh, some were sent, some were not. So some of the questions that are being asked has clarifying information in her workbooks that maybe could have been brought out and brought into the room. But she didn't have that chance. Um, and we also, I think, had a stack of questions with the sheriff's department that I don't think you've had answered yet. And some of those would impact some of the work we're doing here. I just don't want the, the room to see the optics of somehow somebody's not prepared or have what they need because we do. But it's just getting everybody to work together to get it in here so we can talk about.
Thank you, Chairman.
And again, I completely understand the discussion about finances. It's, it's important, it's critical and it's relevant. But again, it wasn't the primary directive given to staff in the motion.
Right.
That made the final decision.
I just want to be able to compare apples to apples and not, I added a computer in this budget, but not in this budget, and now look, this one's cheaper. Well, it's cheaper because there's no computer in it. So when we, before this board makes a decision, I hope all the numbers are accurate. Let's just move on from there.
The numbers are as accurate as I can possibly get it with the information that I have at hand.
And there was.
Right, but some of them like medical, there will need to be at least five dollars put in the medical budget.
They're potentially could after the directive of the board.
Um, the same scenario, we now have ten. Corrections people that are doing transports to Norcore, but there's absolutely nothing in vehicle replacement or anything for them.
I, I left that open specifically for, I did not leave it open for twenty twenty four. Um, the transportation cost of the vehicle, the rental rate, I, I remained left in there. In twenty twenty four total cost, um, going forward with, with the board and what the board chose to do. I left it open because would we need another vehicle? I don't know that. That would be a directive of the board.
So those are items, just as we move through them, that I put them on the to-do list.
So I hope so.
I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Christopher delving and taking this as seriously as he does, and I, I hope everyone knows that this is. If, if I may, I know, but I want to talk about this page too, though. Uh, I want everybody to know that, that this is exactly how serious, uh, we take the regular budget when we go through the budget cycle. And this, this is, this is the amount of depth that we draw, get into looking at every line item and budgets. Be so because, so that we can budget appropriately in the fat situation where we know our, our available resources are declining, not going up. And so I want to thank Commissioner Christopher for the time delving into this and taking it as seriously he does. Uh, I would like to ask the question, um. Some of the big numbers, I mean, we can, you know, we can talk about fuel, we can talk about these little things. The big numbers that I look at, um. Twenty-five guaranteed beds contracts, um, at a hundred and five dollars. How did we get to the assumption that it was twenty-five? Did we get responses from the sheriff's department on what the average number of beds needed from, uh, the county versus the cities is? How did we get to twenty-five?
No, I did not get a response from the sheriffs, um, or we did not. And twenty-five. What, the number that I had at that moment in time of what were city inmates. Um, versus what wa, what was county inmates twenty-five, if I reduce the city out of that twenty-five would be a high number. At that point in time. But without the actual information from the sheriff's office, I don't know. Other than that's the best guess I could take. I could take City of Goldenale's and Benjen and White Salmon, remove them. And then that would be the counties, excuse me, the counties.
And you did this from a point in time, not over an average over years, not over because we do not have the information. So like Commissioner Christopher.
Though can, can, so. We have, I guess I would say, where did you get to the twenty-five? Did you remove the cities?
I did. Yes, because we have.
So if we take out all the cities people, that gives us how many right now?
I don't know that right now because at this point in time, there was thirty-five.
Total.
Total.
And then you removed the cities.
At that point in time, there was twelve of City of Goldenale, and there was six of City of Benjen and White Salmon. So I removed those and then estimated high.
And then, so, so you removed it and then you added a contingency on there for creating the base level of beds. So it could actually be lower, uh, or it could be higher. It all depends on the day, but you're, you're estimating conservative so that we have a higher estimated of cost, not a lower estimated cost.
Norcore was willing after the first year with to reevaluate our beds to be able to make adjustments.
Well, see that, that answers the question of where my next question was going. When you had the twenty-five beds, technically. We all know it's an estimate, but the twenty-five beds does not cover city inmates.
Correct. Because it is my understanding that we cannot contract on behalf of the cities.
With Norcore. That's.
It did. So. Follow up on a point you made about the Norcore toll is one of their other customers. Initially started with a bed rate and then the second year it lowered because they had a year's worth of information. So to your point, after a year, Norcore ours could go up or go down depending on, and the guaranteed beds doesn't mean that's all you get. If you have twenty-five guaranteed beds, you're just paying whether you fill them or not. If you need thirty-five. You get thirty-five, you just pay the other bits on, on a daily rate.
So it's more of, it's more of a block amount.
Yeah.
And then, and then to guarantee that that's there, that they're willing to guarantee that those spaces are available.
But they're also willing to let you, if you block twenty-five and you only need twenty, they're not going to hold you to the twenty-five. They'll let you lower to the twenty the next year.
The next year as.
Right, but technically if you block twenty-five and all of a sudden you go on a crime spree and you have fifty, they might say, all right, we don't have the space. Uh, you get twenty-five and, and anything over that, we'll give you if we have them.
Yeah.
But we may not have.
They, they, they have a hundred and twenty in there now. They have capacity for two forty.
Yeah, but they would need more staff.
No, their staff for the full.
Yeah.
That's interesting. That's different than what I heard, so I'll have to confirm that. My source, not your source.
I suspect if they had a constant two forty, they may make adjustments in, in certain staffing levels, but, um, they didn't. The US Marshals brings them fifty at a time.
Because when I, when I talked. Uh, to the individual from there, they had a threshold that they were trying to stay at because if they went over it, they would have to add staff. And that would add a whole new expense, so meaning they need to get another eighty people to fill it for them to hit over that threshold.
Norcore has standards, um, not just Oregon jail standards, but Norcore's standard, facility standards exceed the Oregon-based jail standards. So I would imagine that, yeah, they would, they would want to staff at a level that was above. Um, the Oregon State statute of standards.
So as we work to fix these budget, you know, these ops, these budgets, I know we have to make decisions, but we need the information. Um, we need to know what the actual number is of counties over the average, because I believe that was in the, the questions that were asked to the sheriff's department. In order for this line item, because this is a, the biggest line item, we need accurate information, not a moment in time. And I know you're working with the information that you have, but I'm just saying in order for us to make final decisions. We need th, those kind of, that information because that's not something that you can, if we're off by fifty percent, that could be three, four hundred thousand dollars of.
We cannot negotiate a contract without having an accurate count.
Correct. So unless you have an, an option, had to get that information.
That's, I'm just saying that, that this is one of the questions that we've asked the sheriff's department that would have helped. Add further detail to your report that we did not get the answers on. And, and we need those, we have to have that in order to make that kind of a decision.
I, if, if the board is insinuating the sheriff is not giving us information, I understand he hasn't asked, answered your long list of questions that. Both he and the prosecutors advise this board would take six months to a year to answer. But the answer to how many of the thirty-five inmates. Are city inmates? If you can't get the answer there, you should be able to reach out to the city and ask each city, how many people do you currently have incarcerated in our jail? They should know.
And, and I did in that moment in time, that's how I got the information.
And then the remainder is our number.
Right, but the, but the issue I'm stating though is, is that's, that's a point in time and you can't make large decisions on a point in time. We need to have an average. Which Jen did what she needed to do in order to come up with a point in time for making that. But we need like an average over years with a forecast of where things are going, because this is what, this is the biggest line item and. But we need like an average over years with a forecast of where things are going, because this is what, this is the biggest line item. And in yes, it's.
And I think there's information within the courts we can pull.
Commissioner Christopher, to, to address, um, something you touched on, um, the sheriff never denied general access to his staff or to his office. And, um, and his staff was willing to provide information, some we did ask for. The, uh, report asked a lot more detail. I just want to be clear, the sheriff never denied his access to the information or his staff. And frankly, out of respect for his staff, there was some information I probably could have got and would have got. But I knew we were working at different odds and I wasn't going to put them in that situation out of, um, respect to them as individuals and professionals. So I did not spend every day over there trying to get quick answers to all the questions because I just felt it wasn't a very human way to treat a coworker.
Definitely was not fair to put somebody in that position.
They never said we couldn't come over and they never told us they wouldn't answer our questions.
Okay, I, I, I very much appreciate that because they've answered my questions when I ask them, so. Um, the, the last thing I kind of have on option number two, which is the two corrections deputies on staff at a time. Uh, is a grave concern for officer safety. And let me throw out a couple of scenarios. In one of those, you have a corrections officer with a control board monitor. Uh, person, what if? The control board operator is obviously in the court control room and not allowed to go down on the floor. What if the one control or corrections deputy is doing rounds, walks by and sees an individual hanging? Runs in there, grabs him by the ankles, lifts him up. He was cutting the rope. Control board operator can't go down to cut the rope. Send the cavalry, I guess GPD shows up in five minutes and comes down to cut the rope. Uh, because nobody else is there to cut the rope. That's inmate safety, that's officer safety. Grave concern, but can I finish my statement? That is a grave concern I have with only running two people on shift. Now, on the situations where you have two control or two corrections deputies on shift, ideally, you should have two deputies doing the rounds because I don't want it to be a one-on-one scenario. If an inmate goes postal, I don't want it one-on-one. You want overwhelming force, you want two-on-one. Well, to do that, there can't be anybody in the control room. So now you got somebody in the control room and one on down there. Let's say corrections deputy gets jumped by a couple guys. What's the corrections person that's working the control room do? Does he go down to help? Well, if he does that, he's not in the control room to open the door for the cavalry when the cavalry arrives. Somebody's got to stay in the control room to open the door or I need to finish this.
No, I wanted to get your attention.
Or you need to change the locks on the door so that when the control, the deputy says send the cavalry and starts spending for his life. GPD can show up and key in a number to get in the building. Currently, the control board operator would be locked in the control room to make sure they can open the door for the cavalry. Officer safety, huge, one person on the floor, bad idea. It's why we have three. We have one in the control room and two officers on a time. And it also is effect for inmate safety because now you don't have anybody to cut the rope. So I would just advise my seatmates as they look at this option. And downshift from three on shift at a time to two on shift at a time, if your goal is to increase the health, safety and welfare of the inmates and the deputies, this doesn't do it.
And, um, i- if I may, that's very, very valid points. And, you know, coming from a law enforcement family and military family myself, I wholeheartedly agree with, um, a lot of that statement. So that is why in this fiscal notes, why I included a total cost of employee there for you. So that if you, if the board chose to go this route, but wanted to beef up the amount of employees, there was a general idea of what one individual corrections officer would cost at, at a higher level because these are senior level employee numbers.
Right.
So that, that's why, that's why it's there. So should the board choose to do that? That there is a general idea that, that you know, to be able to add into that, um.
That's where I'm coming with this. So hopefully if the board chooses this, they choose to have three on staff at a time, which is currently what we currently have. We have three on staff at a time, a director, uh, and a chief of operations. I would imagine if the board chose to go this route, they would still need a director. And maybe instead of a chief of operations, they'd have a finance person, but technically it's the exact same number of employees we have now. So they can figure out what the budget is by looking at the current budget and it would be the same for payroll.
I would advise, I would advise the board to hire a consultant to see if the same level of, um, staffing was needed for three holding cells versus forty.
And a very small piece of what you just talked about, and I think in general, we probably all agree with what you talked about, officer safety is, is, is primary. Uh, inmate safety as well, um. We have talked to facilities if so directed and if an option was chosen, they would look into the ability to change the lock system on those doors to see if it could be done and how much it would cost to do what you're talking about is to change so that the doors don't have to be controlled by a person in a different location.
Right, that's my point. If you want the control board operator to be able to go render assistance or cut a rope, you have to give them the ability to get in the jail.
Yes.
So we would, that needs to be an expense added to that budget line.
Yeah, it didn't make sense to have them do that.
And that's all I have for option number two.
Well, and I just want to say thank you again for cast and option are, are optimum words here. And I really appreciate Mr. Chris- Christopher's bringing up officer's safety. It's paramount. And that will be once we choose an option, those will be the deeper discussions we can have to pirate all those problems out and see what it would cost to.
Well, I, I agree. I hope the board chooses a couple of options and then gets to the correct dollar amount of both of those options before it makes a final decision. That's kind of what I'm trying to get to.
Did you have anything?
Um, I don't have an option four because I don't believe option four is even a, uh, option.
Certainly.
So, um, how, may, may I ask Commissioner Christopher, uh, option four, I think was put in there because we, we know the jails, jails wear out. Uh, we know that jails have to re-rebuild. We, we, we have the, at least I have the likelihood that there will be jail standards in Washington state in legislation passed like there was in the eighties shortly within the next few budget cycles. Uh, and that might have to be requirement of rebuilding the jail. And I think it was a wise idea for staff to include that so that we can look at those true costs. While I can agree with you, you know, on its face value, um, we don't have the money and we don't have the resources. But I think if we choose option three or we choose option two, we have to be looking at that, that sometime in the future, that might be a likelihood of you will get pushed to have to rebuild the jail. So staff, thank you so much for doing that.
My no on option four was not a, a budgetary issue. My, my, my no on option four is I don't believe if we made ourselves a regional jail up here, we would get enough support from outside agencies and/or other counties to fill the space anyway. So.
Option four, um, is included because during every meeting of the board, I not only listen to what the board is saying, I'm listening to what the public is saying. And what I picked up from the public was, uh, they thought it would be viable to be able to build a new jail. So I wanted to make sure that that was captured and highlighted. Option four does not, is not a regional jail.
No.
Um, it, I stayed in there that the only way option four has any chance of penciling out is a regional approach with other counties. Um, so that's why option four is in there. Because I listened to the public.
Clark County's told me they're adding a wing onto their jail just for housing, not any s- support service, just cells. And I think they said it was fifty cells.
They're growing in inmate population.
Eighteen million dollars just add a wing to their current jail, just for cells, not the medical and the, all that other stuff.
I can't believe they're growing in inmate population. Everybody I've talked to is going down in inmate population.
Right, but they've been, but they've been, um, using Skamania County for overflow for a long time. And so by adding that, they will be pulling those back likely.
I was just highlighting the cost. Just, just add, just add basic cells was as much as this entire building, um, where that's why an entire new jail is, uh, um, very expensive. And I know Jeff Hunter looked at some of the current jails being built that include a lot of other services, um.
Because of the standards that are being drafted to be pushed forward.
Uh, off the number three. First, I guess I want to point out, I'm going to go back to the top of the page, but the bottom of the page, it has a fiscal note that in order for the Board of County Commissioners to run the jail, option three, it's in there that we need a body scanner. Well, I don't know if you've looked at the failings of body scanners and how they're not necessarily working. And I hear it with the other commissioners on the insurance pool. Um, that have bought them and they're failing. And then before I bought a body scanner for two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and forty thousand, I would need to prove that criminals are actually smuggling drugs into our jail to prove we actually need a body scanner.
So I didn't say need, I just said added, um, because the last thing I heard from the board was try to get as close to apples to apples with Norcore and the options and the, what Norcore offers. So, and, and I didn't put two hundred and forty thousand in there. Actually, I just, I Googled and came across a Washington, um, county jail that purchased one for a hundred and fifty. So that's, that's what I went with.
You have that in the option three budget forecast.
Yes, a hundred and fifty, but I did not say need in the fiscal, I just said it's added to try and get the services as close to Norcore as possible because the board wanted as close to the apples to apples comparison. Questions?
Y- yeah, lots, but I would like to, to also say that comparing our jail to Norcore is not comparing apples to apples, it's comparing apples to oranges. One's a.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree with that, but.
If you wanted to compare apples to apples, we'd be comparing our jail to other county jails our size in the state of Washington.
But we're not contracting with other county jails.
Right, but that would be apples to apples. How many of those have body scanners? How many of those have nurses? How many of those have?
Sir, you're the one that asked me to compare as close to possible to Norcore's.
I, I was not.
I believe.
I, I think we are looking for comparable to give us the best services.
Yes.
But that was, that was not me.
Because it's the whole intent.
And we had this discussion in my office and I told you that I don't believe it's apples to apples, I believe it's apples to oranges.
But it's apples to apples going forward if we want to provide better services.
Okay, so that also brings up, have we looked into, um, you now have it on option number three? That we're creating a medical space in the jail. It has budget line for medical staff. How many medical staff was that?
I would have to go back to my working document to see exactly, um, how much, how many, um, were there. I had worked with our public health director to get that information and what that would, um, look like in order to staff that exam room as well as, um, supply that exam room with a necessary equipment.
Was that, was that also using nurses to provide medications as an apples to apples comparison like what Norcore does?
It, it was, yes, it included, um, an M D, a P A, R N staff, I believe too. But again, like I would really prefer to go back to my working note where I have that.
So this is going to be a question I'm going to have going forward. Where is this three, four nurses slash doctors working in the jail that has thirty inmates? Um, my question is going to be, let's compare apples to apples with other jails that have thirty inmates, not Norcore with a hundred and twenty. And see how many other county jails that have thirty inmates have four medical staff onsite at all times, twenty-four hours a day.
Believe it was only two twenty-four hour, it was only.
Was it four?
Two RNs, one P A.
Oh, it wasn't twenty-four in the first place.
No.
You wrote in there that there is a clinic that's seven days a week. You didn't say that there was twenty-four hour pressing staff.
Functioning similar to Norcore who has a P A onsite one day a week, um, for clinicals, but has four R N staff. Um, as well as psychology staff and whatnot, seven days a week. Um, so again, working with public health director, I was able to come up with what I believe two RNs, seven days a week. That would then give them days off so that there was somebody onsite with some days off in that, but.
Right, so this is, this option with this, this number of healthcare people in the jail, uh, which won't lessen our K V H bill, uh, for people that have so, need something more than.
I'm confused as to why it wouldn't lessen it because if we had clinic on staff, currently we use K V H as a clinic.
For everything.
For everything. So the only thing that should be going to hospital in this scenario would be emergent situations. Heart attacks, uh, broken bones, any types of those situations. Um, but the clinical daily stuff that you would typically, any of us would go to a family clinic for, that would be taken care of onsite.
And there may be things that, um, should be addressed that aren't getting addressed because it doesn't reach a level to go to K V H that if we had somebody on staff to address those issues.
So we're going to turn the hundred and twenty thousand dollar K V H bill into a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Additionally, um, yes, in order to be able, in order to be able to address the needs and the safety and the wellbeing of the inmates in our care, having medical onsite.
I don't.
Would be a necessity.
I don't disagree with having medical onsite, I disagree with the number.
Using K V H as, as that when we, when we send somebody to K V H in order to receive treatment, they're barely, barely covering their costs with what they can recover if they're even covering it. So on average, barely coming at cost, sometimes in the red for what we send to K V H due to those requirements of either not being able to bill the county at what the actual cost is by R C W, having to do that discounted rate. Um, and, and the treatment needed or the fact that, you know, if an inmate is released, but they don't have medical insurance. Odds are there, K V H has eaten that anyway. Um, so using K V H as a clinic, in my opinion, is not being a good county partner.
And is this built off of potential additional beds?
No.
With the thought, okay, just the thirty.
No, we do not have the capacity to.
So this is, this is for nurses onsite or doctors.
I said two, two RNs onsite, seven days a week. We have to have a P A and the P A has to answer to an M D by law.
So I guess my question's going forward, if this is an optional scenario coming out of whatever decision is made. Is it mandated by state law that a jail with our inmate population have this?
No, currently nothing is mandated by state law.
Well, I believe if you have a certain inmate population, you have to have a medical facility onsite by state law.
But not for our site.
Not for.
Correct.
Our site, no.
Point in asking the question. Uh, and then I want to know exactly how many jails there are of our size that we compared us to in the state of Washington and how many of them have what kind of medical services available? So that this board might look at all of those potential medical services that other counties are doing to be able to pick something that isn't the Taj Mahal of medical services for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But I'd like to add in there the thought of this is covering some things that as a county, we need to cover. The humanity issues and also the potential legal liabilities. That's why we want medical staff.
Uh, Commissioner Christopher.
I don't disagree with medical staff. I disagree with this number. And I believe there's other options that are working just fine for every other county out there. So I believe when you try to set it up with the Taj Mahal, you want to have the best medical facilities of any jail our size in the state of Washington. Well, there's cost for that. And that cost is going to drive up the cost of operations so far up that it makes it way convenient to just go to Norcore. So we can rule this option out.
Commissioner Christopher.
Add, add.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. We did not skew this report to go to Norcore. The directive given to staff in a two-to-one vote was to go to Norcore. This is the medical that is. This is the medical that is provided at the level that Norcore does. Could it be higher? Could it be lower? Yes. Do we need to talk to a professional? Yes. Do we need to pick an appropriate county to talk to? Yes. Uh, the insurance pool, which you're a director, recommended Island County. They believe that there's a corrections expert on their staff. That's who is going to come down and look. We, at some point, if you pick this option, we would need to talk to those kinds of folks. Franklin County had a consultant in the past that helped them build a new jail to find out what it should be. Should it be three nurses, two nurses? The P A onsite once a day, every day? How does that work? We don't know. But I will guarantee you we did not build the Taj Mahal to skew the results to Norcore. The directive given to staff, anything short of providing compliance was in subordination was to take staff, was to move it to Norcore. There was no attempt to skew the result.
Commissioner Christopher, if I may, and thank you uh for standing up for uh your professional and ethical due diligence to the direction that was given by the board. I appreciate that. The the direction was very clear, which I was going to say was is that we were trying to create a apples to apples comparison of the same level of service. And that's what you did. You said, based on what they have, this is what it would take to have the same level of services for our individuals. And I appreciate that. Now, could you reduce that and have a lower level of services? Absolutely. Would that have a budget and impact on the finances in the forecasted budget? Absolutely. Your job was to present us with, this is the cost. And then it's our job to set the policy in the direction on whether, which direction we'd want to go with that. And I appreciate you because you gave us the options. Uh, you can also, I would um contact Stevens County or Ferry County and ask them what they pay on their medical. They're fairly similar in size. So I mean, I did that. I reached out. I talked to other um heads of jails um to to get the answers to those questions myself and and being, you know, we're all three independent. You you can do that as well. Um, asking staff to do it and then have it and then questioning staff on whether or not that's true or not. I, that's not the direction. I think we all have to do our own due diligence. We all have to do our own research. Um, but I think is what staff did was give that apples to apples comparison on, this is the level of service down there. This is his level of service here. And thank you for for fulfilling that duty. And we all know it was going to be expensive.
I guess I will uh wrap up. The board is where the board is. Um, looking at option three, I'm seeing inmate meals, which we normally spend about sixty grand on. If we go to the Board of Commissioners running the jail, it's going to move from sixty, seventy grand to a hundred and twenty-six grand. And it's my understanding that that's because there's been an opinion somewhere, I don't know where, that we no longer cook our meals in the jail that we sublet with K V H and they now uh provide all of our meals. And that's why the dollar amount was higher. So I'm trying to confirm or deny why the inmate meals prep, if the Board of Commissioners runs the jail, went up doubled than what it currently is.
Um, I believe I just took the number that it costs for K V H to contract with K V H to um provide meals. That, that is all.
That's my point. So technically, we can keep, if the Board of Commissioners runs the jails, we can still
Yes.
contract with R mark or whatever and lower that number by half.
Yes.
Uh, that's a catered meal service.
Should, should the board, but the the one, should the board choose to make those decisions? Hundred percent. You can absolutely do that. And those numbers could adjust. Um. I don't, I don't have that contract or could find that contract with our current um supplier. So I went off with the data that I knew I could get um with an accurate dollar figure.
Um.
I like it, Bill.
Why is the um insurance for option two different than the insurance for option three?
L and I hours.
L and I hours, good answer. Uh, question, you may or may not know the answer to. You may have to find it out. Currently is Mr. Colb's salary coming out of the one point eight million jail budget in part of those wages? Or is that coming out of sheriff's budget?
Administration budget.
Okay. Actually like that answer. Uh, and then we get on to option four, which, to tell you the truth, I spent zero time on.
Um, again, option four, I think all of us who look at budgets on a regular basis knew that that number would be extremely high. But I don't think that the public did.
Right.
And I thought it was important that it was put in there for the the public understood and saw what that would cost.
The only way that would pencil out, in my opinion, which I, they might have a different opinion. They, we might actually all agree on something. Uh, the only way that would pencil out is if we built a bigger facility and even more money.
Absolutely.
And knew that we could contract with other counties or corrections agencies or something to fill it up and where we get to charge them more money.
Again, the regional approach.
complement our costs.
Yep.
Um, so unless we go big, we're going home. And I would, I would guess we would all agree on that.
Yes.
Those were the only questions I have.
I guess the one thing I would add to that is this is in today's dollars. And that is, you know, we're looking at sixty-three million dollars in today's dollars as we go out in time. Um, at some point, all jails have to be rebuilt. We're seeing that from the jails that were built in the eighties, uh, when there was state dollars available. And if we continue to run the jail for the course of time, while we have to look at this, we also have to assume that um, there is the, the, the value of the dollars that the jails continues, will continue to decline, just like any other a capital improvement, whether it be buildings or bridges or anything else, and it's going to have to be replaced. And that replacement costs and value, we should be taking into consideration that that is a known unknown value out in the future that would be enormous to the taxpayers of Clickitack County, whether we took it from a regional approach, which somebody else around us might take a reasonable approach. Um, or if we just try to build our own jail, but that's something that we need to take into consideration in the grand scheme of the decision-making process.
Yeah, I, I would agree that I have no doubt eventually that there might be a law passed that you have to uh weatherize your buildings. And one of the good reasons why we tore down an attic, so we didn't have to weatherize it with the new state standards. There could be one with a jail coming down the line. Sure, great, whatever. I'm not going to make my decisions based off what could happen five years from now, twenty years from now. Because five years from now, twenty years from now, if that ever happens, then whatever board is sitting here might reevaluate this whole equation. Uh, and choose a different option from whatever this board chose because they have different information leading to a different result. Uh, I'm going to make my decisions based off the information I have today. Not what could be coming through legislation years.
Well, I, I, I think no matter what, the, it's not what, the legislation could push it faster. But I think the idea that the jail would have to be rebuilt is something that has been stated multiple times by the sheriff and and by community members that that we're going to need a new jail in in the jail standards might be the perfect, you know, might precipitate that in a sooner uh amount of time, but in the end, we know it would have to be rebuilt.
Yes, but just to put that on a clear and present timeline, when the previous Board of Commissioners decided to build this building and fund this building um with a twenty-year loan, they also knew that the next project after this building was paid off could potentially be a new jail. So that puts a timeline of about twenty years from now. Uh, unless the state pushes it sooner. So I'm not worried about what could happen twenty years from now. The state could I mean, they already disvowed all uh drug laws. They might legalize everything and not allow anybody to have to put anybody in jail. I'm not going to try to guess on what they do twenty years from now.
And I think the, the other piece of that is, is, you know, as facilities age, what we always see is the cost for maintenance continues to to rise on those facilities. And that needs to be baked into part of that conversation and that discussion. Um, and that's just something that we need to take into consideration. I'm not saying that that's a determining factor. I'm just saying that's something that we all need to be aware of as well as the public.
Yeah, but in the same regard, we just spent four hundred grand fixing the roof. But if we would have closed the jail completely mothballed it, went to Norcore, there wasn't a single employee in the jail, we would still have to spend four hundred grand if the jail would be full of water. So it's not going to save much of that buildings and grounds expense other than, you know, yeah, when somebody runs into the Sally Port door, we don't have to fix it for twenty-five grand, but we don't have to put a new control board in, but technically we don't have to do that for another fifteen years either now. So I don't think, see a lot of big expenses that won't be uh still here, even if we close the jail.
The only savings that I put in to the forecasted budgets from buildings and grounds, Public Works Department was in those scenarios that the entire facility was not operational, so that um Public Works has provided me a dollar figure for electricity in those and water services, the reduction of that, what they forecasted that to be, it was four thousand dollars of a savings. It's it's miniscule in the forecasted budget. And so, yes, to, to agree with you, it is
So one, one more thing I'd like to see, in my mind, I think option one is out, which was the original plan. Um, because it just can't happen. Option four, in my mind, is out. So to me, we're dealing with option two and three. I would like to see uh, see how I go about this. No, we'll pull that remark. We'll save that one for later.
If this might be beneficial, um, because I drafted, I came at this report and project as completely non-biased, I do have a matrix to take bias out of it for the board, should they choose to use it, where it's a weighted matrix to evaluate criteria for each option um on a point value system. If the board would like to use that, I have it available for you to use. If you'd like to just see it and make a decision from that, I can do that.
I'm, I'm unbiased, but I can't come to a decision until I see the dollar amounts in the right spot. And I know the options for nurses and meals and and that kind of stuff.
I'd like to see what you created, Jim.
Thank you.
Going forward, Mr. Anderson, how do you feel about Mr. Christopher's statement of one and four not being viable? Do we want to even focus on any more discussion on them?
I think we need to have a very deep, deep, in-depth conversation. What we have before us is what's, what we ask staff to do. And I think staff did an admirable job um bringing us options, bringing us information. I think there's a lot of other information that has been asked of uh the Sheriff's Department um that needs to be taken into consideration when you make final decisions. Um just like Commissioner Christopher was saying, you know, uh, it's, he wants to be able to make a decision when you know, we're looking at and we're refining it, you know, we need to know how many actual beds at Norcore, what's that cost is going to be. Um, I see here that under your cost efficiency is one of your weighted matrices. And the cost is you have a criteria value of thirty-five percent. And so that, that is one of those things that those decisions would go into that thirty-five percent for that weighted, weighted value. You know, the operational feasibility and that timeframe needs to be taken into account. These are all the things in order for us to make that, that logical rational decision that that doesn't have the biases in it. Um, and I think we need to to find that out. I think that uh, we looked at option one because we have to look at um is that if we could do option one, that would save the county the most amount of money. Clearly, we all know that. Anything from that is less cost effective over time. Um, but it can't be done today because of the rules, the legislation, all these things that have to occur. What I hate doing is I hate building personally two of the same things. I don't like having to pay um Norcore a hundred and five dollars a day for booking and holding and everything else, but then also be using county dollars to pay for booking and holding and everything else here. Uh, I would think that if we were able to get if Norcore wasn't having to do all of those costs and expenses for booking and holding, we should be able to get a reduction in that, that rate would be my hope is that in negotiation because that's work that they're, that we're taking on that they don't have to do. When they gave that hundred and five dollars, I would assume they were assuming they were going to do booking and holding and everything else. And so that's part of those negotiations. I, I think that, that.
We've already had those discussions and that they came to a conclusion that that was their, their bottom line.
That, so it's, it's, it's a flat fee and everything.
Doing booking and holding.
Yes.
Or, or was that with, whether they do booking and holding? Because wasn't the original.
They did it? Was there a different number?
I think the discussions were, that would not be a logistic even for them because of the the differences in state law.
Right, that was possible.
Same, same number regardless.
But what I'm talking about here is this transition. And we're looking at four individual options. And we all know that you did the best you could so that you could provide us with the information to make a rational decision. In the end, what actually ends up occurring in most instances isn't just option two or option three. It's kind of, let's work together and find the compromise defined. Here's where we want to go. Here's where we start out with. Here's how we get there. Just like uh what a transition plan, which was in the original motion was made for. We know that whenever you create transition in government, costs go up for a short period of time because you're going to end up double dipping and you're going to end up doing twice as much work for a time. The idea is, is to create operational efficiencies over the lifetime. Um, so that, so that future boards, but long after we're here, get to receive the benefits of that so that at some point, and I'm only talking about the cost section. At some point, those, those costs, savings can be used either for the sheriff's patrol side or some other thing. And that's just a portion of the decision-making process. Um, putting cost at thirty-five percent. Um, I can agree with that. I think, you know, we all have our own internal weighting and and costs. When I look at budget being that budget is one of our primary duties for the, for the legislative and executive branch of government. I think that's a valuable metric. And and thank you for this because it's one thing when you have everyone talking about, this is your opinion, this is how you feel, this is everything else. When you can actually put a, a quantitative analysis to it, um, sometimes it changes how you see the, see the decision-making in the end. So I appreciate staff bringing this forward. Thank you very much.
I don't necessarily disagree with that. Um, and I think this weighted matrix uh might be a, a fine tool. Uh, when we get the information needed to actually weigh them. Because I guess my argument now is that if you're trying to waste, weigh them on cost efficiency and and give that matrix a thirty-five percent scoring and you're doing that based off the numbers that are in this document that we already know there's no cars and guns and badges and, and you may need three people on shift versus two people on shift. You, we need to know the answer before you can weigh them. So.
I don't disagree.
I, I would highly recommend that the board drops option number one and four and ask their team to get better um, numbers for option two and three, while at the same time, the board has ongoing discussions on the questions of how many nurses, whatnot, so that we can make sure they have the correct number based on what we want to do and then come back with a weighted option on those two.
Sometimes things look different from the inside looking out and the outside looking in. Um, some of these questions, and there are a lot of good questions. Um, would exceed our um knowledge, skills and abilities to answer. Maybe it's time that we bring someone from the outside in, a consultant, someone to help us look at some of these um, um, some of these questions that have, um, otherwise we just keep talking to folks, but I think it maybe it's time to move to a um I know, for instance, the, the pool had offered Island County a. I know, for instance, the the pool had offered Island County, a person who works for Island County is what they consider quote unquote a jail expert. I know there's others out there uh that maybe it's time we bring someone in from the outside who's independent, completely unbiased. Um that we've all been unbiased to this point, but now we're getting down into very um the levels of expertise and background that we don't have. And um I don't think it's hard to put the Sheriff's Department in that situation either. But to bring someone in from the outside.
I I agree with you, and I just want to clarify that I don't think you're being biased. I think there's numbers and one option that aren't in another option, and I want the same number in both options. So that the total number is more accurate, so that when you do a weighted matrix, you're actually seeing whether there's a cost savings or a cost expense.
Understood.
Just try to get the numbers accurate and then we work.
I think to get there, maybe we bring someone in to help us do that.
And I would like that for the overview of the entire choice of where we're at. To make sure we have everything we need and that we valued it right.
I think it wouldn't be, I wouldn't, I'm not talking about having to come in and grade our paper on how we're currently running the jail. That's not on the table. Yeah, yeah, to take these options, whatever options you narrow it down to and look at those and say to get
And if we're narrowing down from one and four aren't feasible, three, I would like to have a longer conversation about three because we haven't talked about what that looks like for the Board of County Commissioners. Again, we're creating a department. We saw what that did with the health and what you went through. I give that to you.
That's what we went through in trying to do it in six months.
Yes, and um we we haven't talked about the liability for the, you know, the jail versus the county commissioners and the liability folding over into our section. And if it's number three, that's where that's going to land. And I want you to be sure to weigh that option.
If I may, I don't, um, Madam Chair, the liability is the county's liability. It's it's not our liability. It's not the sheriff. It there is potential for personal liability, um which we all assume when we choose to run for election. That's why we have bonds. Um but I do see it more as the it's the overall county's liability and where that stands, and I try to keep that at the forefront of my mind. I don't think you would have to be absolutely certifiably insane to ever want to have the liability of a jail underneath you. Uh there's, there's just, we know at the state level what that liability looks like. Um I think the the direction of the board, we are a policy ma- making board. We try to set the we have the ability to create a Department of Corrections like many other counties are doing. Uh we have the ability to change um the the course of that. That's within our purview. The I think the the motion um from that I made, the actual motion is is that we need to have that conversation about the policy and the direction. Um and I think staff has done an absolute admirable job coming up with the best numbers that you can with the information that you have. I respect Commissioner Christopher's um requests to refine those numbers because uh that was what you asked me to do when you first gave it, and you said, we know you're going to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. Commissioner Christopher did that as well, and I think we can, we can update those numbers. That will help us make that final determination in in that direction. I think what we need to do is we also need to have that conversation about how we individually feel about whether, because option two and option three both do the same, exact same thing. They require the Board of County Commissioners to create a Department of Corrections, which at some level, whether it's full lot, full level of your, we're running it, we're going to keep it here, this is what we're doing. Or we're going to do a half-term measure and we're going to house them. Either way, you're creating a Department of Corrections. It's underneath the Board of County Commissioners. That was the direction that staff was asked to create. But again, what I have said publicly is is that I haven't made a final determination on what that will look like, where that will be. Um and I think we need to have that conversation. Uh is that the direction that the board wishes to go in terms of creating a Department of Corrections?
I I guess I can answer the question in the matter of so that it's my understanding, because there wasn't an option five of the sheriff keeps the jail, the board helps them by hiring a consultant to go through policies and procedures and hires nursing staff and whatnot while under the jails or under the sheriff's control, that that wasn't an option. So all of the options given to me are the options presented by the motion. Which all of them are the answer that you've come up with. It isn't a matter whether I want to. I don't have that option because that would be option five. To not have that option.
Well, it sounds like um that the Department of Corrections has to have one form or another with the county commissioners.
If we move forward with option two or option three or option one or option four, because that was the direction we asked staff to spend the last two months nonstop reviewing.
Okay.
There are always other options in the world. There's all you, future boards can always change their minds.
But we didn't explore any of those other options.
We did not. That was not the direction for staff. That is the conversation that we had.
My point is, I think your question that you're trying to get me to support is the question that was the main motion, which the main motion said we're going to form a Department of Corrections because it only came up with four options. So that was your motion or mine?
We've had this discussion, Jen and I, and um to bring forward that fifth option would have been somewhere between um poor form and insubordination because the motion directed us
Yes.
to to Norcore. So for us to bring that forward to the commissioners, the option would have been um no matter who the majority is on a decision like that, a really bad decision for staff to do, so.
So could we refine our questions, recap them and refine our questions and move towards having a review? So we have, so we take some of the work away from staff for those finer, deeper points.
I I think we go, I personally I think us and the majority of the general public would be much happier with us if we removed any potential bias and any potential politics by hiring an outside consultant to relook at the numbers, come meet with us in a nice transparent way. Let us have go over this document, what we would like to see out of whatever they can do. What questions we have on nursing and jail staffing and everything else, and let's see what they present. That would be my recommendation. And let's get our personal hands out of it.
Again, that wouldn't, just clarifying, not a statement, sounded like a statement. It's to look at the options before you. It's not to open it back up to
Correct.
What the sheriff has the option of keeping the jail.
There's been a decision, and unless they reverse the decision, the decision is these are the
Because there are staff and members of the public making statements that the decision to close a jail has been stalled or stopped. People are calling our partners and calling our business, our insurance company and making that statement. I just need to clarify. I agree with what she said. That's the direction he wants to go, but that option, they wouldn't be looking at leaving the jail under the sheriff.
No, and from what I'm hearing, one and four are not viable, so they would be viewing just two and three.
And that fifth option that's discussed is still not on the table. I'm just asking. Because people are a little confused, employees are kind of stuck.
That was the answer based on the original motion.
Right.
So the original motion to close the jail gave us four options. We've just eliminated option one and option four.
Right.
Right.
That's where we're at.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
Doesn't mean I support the original motion.
I understand that. Want to clarify that.
Do we need to direct you to reach out?
Well, I guess sometimes it's easiest just to take the pulse. How how do the two, reading all of this? How do the two of you feel about option two versus option three? I mean.
My my personal opinion, by the time you get all the numbers added in here that are true and accurate, you change the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh healthcare package down to a nurse onsite twenty-four seven, I don't really care, five days a week, eight to five to hand out aspirins and give Band-Aids for for a hundred and fifty grand. You're going to find out that option two, and if you start considering officer safety and inmate safety on how do you get the guy off the rope? You're going to find out you need at least four more employees to run your booking facility. And when you add that in there, you're going to find out the dollar number is way higher. Part of me would love this board to do the work. To actually get the the true and accurate numbers of what the medical facility would cost, what in I'm not saying your numbers are inadequate. I'm saying that your numbers are figured out based off two corrections officers at a time. I believe the good, correct answer is three. The numbers would be different with three. That's what I'm saying. So when those numbers change, my wording, I get it. When those numbers change, that budget number is going to change, and I think the general public is going to find out option two is much more expensive.
Again, with a forecasted budget, things go up, things go down depending on the decision, policy decisions made by the board.
And option two is going to be far more expensive on the cities. And option two is going to be far more expensive on the general public because there'll be an increase in site release. Uh and people that have mental illnesses like the guy that attacked Mr. Near not be accepting it in Norcore. So what do you do with him but slap an ankle monitor him on and release him out of the general public? I think the costs of number two are going to be huge. I would love to see the board move forward with an option two or three to prove that.
And I think we
Move, so can you finish that, rephrase that last bit? You would like to see the board move forward with option two or three?
I I I think the answer, when we all come down to it, will be option number three. But that doesn't prove my point that option two will be far more expensive unless the board has somebody actually look at option two. With all those extras involved to find out that option two is actually another five hundred grand more than what's stated here. And that would prove that option two was never viable either.
And I think, you know, listening to an independent person, looking at those two options. But you also have to consider the implementable timeframe on this criteria and what brought us here. We are trying to adjust. Go ahead, Jen.
Viability of an option was not based off of budget.
Right.
Or forecasted budget. It was not, um budget was not a part of viability.
Wasn't a primary.
And nor was it a primary.
Correct.
Option two worked better for the partners, state and local.
Correct. So I think um
You were in the middle of saying something that I was kind of into and then you stopped.
Um I think Jen covered it. Um the reason that we're here uh and what brought us here.
About timeline and
Right, and it there are events that have happened that have brought us here that we can't discuss that could have potential huge impacts to the county at large, and we have to ensure that we started on a path to um ensure that this county is within a safe position, both humanitarian and financial. And that's what brought us to this situation. I think we we need to remember um that is still looming, and we have to look at timeframes and implementation. But I think looking at what those options, how they compare with the added financial information that Mr. Christopher and Mr. Anderson need. It'll tell where we're at, and then we can have that discussion.
And the one more thing that I would add to either an option two or an option three and whatever consultant um is I I am not a lawyer. I I'm also not a a jailer. I'm also not in law enforcement. I'm also don't run a jail. I so don't ask me what the intake policies and procedures should be for the jail. Don't ask me what the suicide policy should be for the jail. That'd be the position of whatever manager, director, whoever we have. But I would hope that this board would reach out to some kind of a consultant. Because either option two or three puts all those things right on the lap of the commissioners. So I would hope that we would not only hire your, have your consultant look at, but have that consultant or another consultant look at whether they look at our current procedures or not, or whether they give us their opinion of correct procedures going forward that we can implement with our holding facility or our whatever, so that we have something to go forward on. Um because any new director that comes in here and asks me what I want to do for the inmate holding, I I I'm not answering your question.
One hundred percent agree with that, and that goes back to um the liability being on the commissioners, and I believe what the chairman was trying to say earlier in regards to, we need to discuss um what that liability looks like, and I would absolutely agree with that and 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 advise the board to do so.
That's my point is either one of these options, now this liability is going to be on the Board of Commissioners, and I would certainly hope we would look at getting the information from consultants on policies, procedures, whatever, before we assume liability. I don't know, maybe the board is wanting to take the jail tomorrow and figure out what options we're doing. Well, what's the transition timeline? Is there, I I don't know. I mean anybody know?
Uh that was, if we went back to the original, the original motion was the creation of a transition plan, and it was also the changing of a supplemental budget. Um and the creation of the, in essence, the Corrections Department was that, and and so these are all done in pieces, right? I think there's a lot of questions that I have. Those are the questions that that I brought forward to the jail, to the board, and these aren't the the financial questions that that Jen did. That's one piece of it. These are the the quantit, these are the qualitative questions that were eight pages that then went back further and priority ranked them. Those are the questions that are, because we have things like the accreditation standards that in the future will likely push us into making decisions that that we want to be proactive about, not reactive about. Uh because that might make the decisions for us that we go from a a number two to a number one or a number three to a number one in these four options. Um when we look at the physical settings within the jail, these are the things that 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 are going to make those decisions that we have no answers to any of these questions. We haven't been given any of these answers. Um and it the email that staff has that she can hand out, uh if you would the email shows that that we will not be getting the answers um to those questions. Which is, which was very concerning because some of, uh in order to come up with the numbers, uh the more refined options for two and three, we need some of those answers when it comes to the financial, uh the inmate programs and services that were, was a whole list of questions. We need those in order to to finish that. I'm gonna get me finished.
Sorry.
From from my perspective, um if we're going to move forward with option two or three, we're going to have to pull that trigger. And what the best thing that we can do is bring in the outside, like other counties have done in the past. Um the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs has the Loaned Executive Management Assistance Program. It's the LEMAP program. Where they bring people in, it's, I think, kind of the conversation that you're having by bringing them them in. That can help us through that to get the answers to all of these questions since we're not going to get them. And that is unbiased, that is people from outside, that is, and and in that same process, if we are moving for option two or three, we're going, by creating that, we're also going to have to be getting someone to manage that jail that's the to do that. And I think that uh we could have maybe part of the LEMAP program could bring someone in who has the experience that would be willing to to do that job for a time so that we can ensure that our um our policies and procedures, um that we can make those those initial changes that I think we all probably assume need to be had and need to be made for the safety of of the inmates um and the well-being of the inmates. We need that to happen sooner rather than later. What I don't like doing is kicking the can down the road, and maybe it's because I have short timer syndrome and I only got seven months left, and I don't want to leave this for for anyone who assumes my seat, but I want to get get this done sooner rather than later. And again, this this does come down to a policy level decision that the board has to make. I understand we need, we need to know those numbers on Um, I understand we need, we need to know those numbers on two, one, two and three. Um, my, my personal opinion, um, is, is that, uh, I hate, hate to admit it, but it sounds like what I'm listening to from my seatmates and, and Lori, you haven't given your full thoughts. So I'd love to hear more of yours, but I'm trying to understand what, what I think Dan is saying and I don't wanna speak for him is, is that, that an option three um, in the short term, um, moving into potentially an option two, if the numbers make sense. With, with, from my perspective, I would add, uh, it would be, it would be a process, a multi-year process where you go from three to two to one. If you can do that, and if we can get to one, that's great. If we, if, if one is completely out and we can only ever do three and, and partial two, or maybe two falls off the, based on the numbers and, and everything else, two falls off. But I think that the idea is, is that, that the public and the expectation is, is that we do something. We, we make, we make a decision and, and we make that final, um. When we made that motion, it was for staff to begin working on this and staff, I think done, has done a great job. I hate making decisions without all the information. I know that I'm not going to get my priority questions answered, let alone all the questions answered without bringing in someone from like the LEMAP.
I, I hope when you bring somebody in, you don't have them, because that'd cost us a fortune to get that list answered.
Um, most of this is not super difficult. I mean. Some of it, some, some pieces staff was able to answer, but a lot of this is not within our wheelhouse, so we can't answer it, which means either the sheriff, which is why we asked the sheriff to answer it, because they have the policies and procedures. They can say, these are, I mean, anytime you go through and you do, uh, a, a full strategic plan. I mean, that's practically what this would lead to is, is your strategic plan of how to upgrade your facility, ensure that your facility is adequate. That's all these questions ask. They're not biased questions. You admitted that they weren't biased.
I, I admitted that most of them weren't, but most of them were so detailed and technical that it would cause hours and hours of staff time to try to answer a single question. And so, I mean, literally that's the reason why you had an estimate that it would take six months to adhere.
And that is why.
The questions.
And that's why I prioritize them again, so that we could get the questions that we needed the answers to in order to make the decisions that we have today.
I couldn't get it simple. Is it legal?
And in terms, and in terms of the hours and hours, I would direct you to the forty plus page report that our staff did uh, over the course of two months, answering the questions in which we still have more questions on. Uh, in, so we know it's possible. Our own staff has done it while also pushing off a lot of extra work. And now we're behind on the budget and we need to get our staff back to doing the things that, that they need to do. Um, but I do wanna see these answers.
Well, moving forward, we've been working with people who have done this before. In a shortcut.
Benton County did transition their jail too, so I'm sure they, I've pointed this out before.
And Spokane, I believe.
They can have, well Spokane's a little bigger, so you know, Benton's bigger too, but Spokane's.
There's some other names out there. Well.
And Benton did it very quickly. Um, I, the PA sent me some things about Benton County and, um, they passed.
It might be a learn from mistakes they made by being too quick too.
And I don't know if in Benton County's case, they just took over the jail and didn't really make any changes. They just changed, um, who soup, who oversees it and didn't really look into the operation of the jail. That I don't know. Some counties have done both. Some have just moved the, who's in control and not maybe made a lot of changes in the operation.
And I would be interested in who the con- consultant has worked with before.
We'll, we can look into all that and come back with them.
Uh, Madam, Madam Chair, I, Dan gave how he feels. I kinda said, you know, this would be my grand, grand scheme. Where, where do you sit?
I fall, um, I believe where you're at is what I was thinking that this is a transitional. Uh, we have to start somewhere. We're gonna have to pick where we start and it'll probably transition as we into option two, uh, and then move on in. Um, I think, uh, to pick one option and land on it immediately and make it whole is gonna be very, very hard, especially with timeframes. Um, so I would like to hear what a consultant has to say with their background about these options and how they would see that transition happen.
What I don't know, we're just talking about if we'll be required to do an RFP or an RFQ for consultant or we'll be able as a professional service, just go ahead and hire somebody or go to LEMAP or go to Wat- Waspick or go to the pool and get somebody they recommend. They have twenty-five jails under their, under their pool, so we'll have to explore into that.
Uh, I would like to clarify, uh, earlier Commissioner Anderson said, I think I heard from Mr. Christopher, but I won't speak for him. Uh, I wanna make sure I speak for myself, which I appreciate the statement. Uh, but then you talked about going with an option three and planning the transition to a two and maybe even to a one. And then you just chose, you agree with him that it might look like we go with a three and then transitions into a two. Um, not, that, I think that's what I heard. I just wanna make it clear, that's not my point right now. I'm not a, let's do an option three and transfer to an option two. I, I wanna look at the two options, uh, and make a final decision because my endpoint is not end up at Norcore. Um, my endpoint is I, I wanna educate a decision which I feel I'm doing right for the people, law enforcement in the area, the, the citizens. Um, and I don't believe that is a Norcore option unless the cost outweighs the harm that that option would cause.
And, and I think, um, I'm not hard line on what the options are. I think having a uh, someone come in is certainly gonna give us another whole view of things we have to accomplish, things we have to, and it may change and shift and morph. These are kinda like forecasted options, actually, when we figure out everything we have to create within those options.
And I would think there's a good chance that if the board landed on option three and tried it out for a year, they'd find out there probably isn't a reason to go with option two after that, but we'll see.
Anything else for you, Mr. Anderson?
I guess for me, I need to get back to, back to the basics of why we're here. And, and what my primary goals are. So, and I think as we continue this discussion, because of course it gets muddied and everybody wants certainty right away. For me, my primary goals, um, are ensuring the safety and well-being of the inmates. Uh, and that includes enhancing the medical and mental health services and improving the overall conditions within the jail. Um, also operational efficiency and cost effectiveness. Ensuring that we choose a model that maximizes our resources and reduces our long-term costs. This is usually what I have an issue with option two is, is because if you stay there in that purgatory, you're paying twice for holding and, and I don't want to, to stay there forever. As long as there's a way through it, I can, I can get behind that, but to me, that's likely going to be a very expensive cost over time. Uh, and number three, the compliance with our legal and regulatory standards. Uh, ensuring that we address our legal challenges and ensure our operations meet all state and federal requirements. Staff has brought before us several options, um, each of them with their own set of advantages and challenges. All of these, uh, approaches address our current operational deficiencies. And you know, we always talk about the elephant in the room. But I think all of them would set us on a course, uh, for long-term efficiency and improvement inmate care if we, if we move down any of these paths. Um, I can promise that I'll, I'll continue to, to approach this discussion with a focus on the facts. Not personal innuendo, fights, anything else. We're talking about the facts of the matter here. We need to re- retain and remain, uh, professional. Uh, and continue to have a shared goal, shared goal of just making Clickidat County a safer community. Um, and I think, uh, based on the conversation today, um, I'm, I'm really impressed with, while it may have been the hot seat and you spend a lot of time working on providing options and you've put your heart and soul into it, Jen, and I can't thank you enough. Um, and, and I know Commissioner Christopher, you're very passionate and you ask questions sometimes that come off, uh, a little zippy. I think you've done a, a good job of, of ensuring that, of being fair and saying, these are my issues, these are my questions. It's hard to handle that, those questions of your work in public when usually we would do those. You know, here's my issues. Can you address these? Bring me something forward that already addresses them. And I understand it'll be based on the, uh, public nature of this situation that you wanna do that in public. I understand that. I also understand that it, it adds time and it also adds, uh, some frustrations and, and probably a little bit of pain, um, for staff that have done an admirable job, um, continuing down this path. Um, I think the what we've seen that we haven't had any conversation, and I don't even know if the board wants to, because we've had such a good conversation so far is, is that this is a, a very split decision. It's a very political, uh, is where it's went. Um, because there's a portion of the, the population that says, well, staff should have looked at an option five where it just remains with under the, the sheriff and there's nothing wrong and we shouldn't make any changes. Um, I've gotten emails about that. I've gotten phone calls about that, um, because members of the public believe that. I will, I will admit that, you know, two months ago, um, we made the decision that, that this was going to be Lori's baby. I've got behavioral health and that's keeping me up and bridge and everything else. And, uh, and I think we can always do better, um, and we might, we might have started off on our left foot rather than our right foot. About making sure, I think, um, in the end, the direction to the staff was the right direction. Um, to, in order to come up with these answers, we had to, we had to push that ball down the road. And I wanna, I wanna check in with both of you on, uh, is this still the direction that, that Commissioner, uh, Zoller primarily, but also Commissioner Christopher, at some point you could get behind? Or is, or is this something that, this should be under the sheriff? I, I don't care. I don't, I don't want. Um, and if, if that's a position that you feel that you wanna take, I wanna have that discussion. I don't want you to feel like, like, like we're railroading you. I wanted to ensure that you had all the time to ask all your questions because we're a board of three. We don't always have consensus, but I think we always need to have the conversation and be respectful.
In, in that I can agree with. We should. I, I know you're trying to, uh, and this is where my, you were, you had a good terminology for the way I speak earlier. Snippy or zippy, zippy. I know your question and asking me is, and, and I'm gonna say this in the nicest possible way, just because I can't think of another way to say it, is trying to pigeonhole me. To say something, uh, that I support the decision or, or whatnot like that. I will continue to be adamant that I believe this process should have opened with a, let's explore our options, not let's close the jail in ten days. It should have been handled an entirely different way, where we got information, hired consultants, came to an educated decision without freaking out half of our employees and half the citizens. I understand the reasoning, the public outcry, the, the, it concerns for inmate health. I get it. With that, I am presented four options currently by this board. I am ruling out option number one because I do not wanna see the consequences of option one. Um, I'm ruling out option five because number one, there ain't any money and technically it isn't needed. Or option four, sorry. I, I'm looking at her weighted scale and there's a five on there. Um, so with what? With the directive of this board and the directive of staff to prepare this packet, I am presented with four options. I can't change the past. I can't fix the past. I'm not getting into the past. I'm presented with four options. Of those four options, I believe that when study and analysis and numbers get crunched and decisions get made, option number three is going to be cheaper than option number two. Um, I believe option number two will even come in more expensive, but will also cause pain and expenses to the cities and site release and everything else. So all I'm willing to be pigeonholed into is based on the board's decision of where we're at today, I have four choices. Of those four choices, there's only two of them that are conceivable to look forward into. And the only one reason I'm mainly looking at even considering option two is I wanna see a detailed analysis of what it should cost when you add three people on shift and KVH bills back in there to prove that it wouldn't be a financial savings going with option two. And that's about as pigeonholed as you're gonna give me.
And I was not attempting to pigeonhole you. I was trying to give you the, the ability to say any piece you wanted, but also I always wanna know where you stand.
I, I believe there could have been an option five, if this was handled differently from the start. I believe if this was handled through side channels, uh, with the sheriff to explain to him the directive that the majority of the board was gonna take, whether he liked it or not. Uh, if, uh, he does not allow the board to have some knowledge of policies and procedures and how things are run, you're gonna leave us no other choice but option two or three. Um, I think he would have um, been okay with that because I, I, me and the chef have not always seen that eye. But I do believe he not only wants what's best for his employees, but he also wants what's best for the inmates and his care. Uh, and if there's people out there in the general public that think otherwise, let them. Um, I, so I think there could have been a way that didn't get emails like this sent, but we are now where we are. Um, and I hope, uh, if this is the direction of the board. We can all figure out a way to play in the same sandbox, uh, and not punish our employees anymore.
You go, Commissioner, what do you have? I mean, it sound, it sounds to me like for Commissioner Christopher, it's option, it's option three makes the most amount of sense. You can always move to option number two.
If, if option number two, let, just to be adamantly clear. If option number three, I mean, yes, no, I'm not gonna be super excited if every other county our size has one nurse, eight to five, and you guys want three. You know, kinda scenario, you're adding four hundred grand to the budget. Um, I think if you do it and you add a nurse or a nurse practitioner, consultant, whatever. And you eliminate the body scanner and all this other, I won't call it fluff, but extras in that number. And you do the X, actuals for the option two, you're gonna find option three is far cheaper and doesn't hurt anybody. So with the options given to me today, I think that's where I believe I would like to end up. But if all that comes out differently and all of a sudden we find out there are state laws that not only that, but we have to have an X-ray technician on site and a cardiologist and who knows? I mean, maybe it turns into a five million dollar budget and Norcore's two million. Well, I'm gonna change my tune real fast. So I'm not, so, and, and that's my point. I mean, people could call me biased all they want. My first job is to look after the taxpayers, period. My second job is to look after taxpayers' money. So I'm worried about hurting the taxpayer with things like site and release. The second thing I'm worried about is taking care of your money in a fiscal way, which is what I've done every day since I came to office. So if option two turned into a huge cost savings, then option three, I'll, I'll think about it. Yeah, I will. I'll have to weigh the harm, harm to the people over that cost. It better be a big number. Because if it's two hundred grand, it ain't enough. I don't think it's gonna get there. So that's where I'm at.
We've had a lot of conversation and I'm, I'm kinda like, what's the marching orders for staff? Where are we going next and how are we getting there? Um, I guess my question for Commissioners Zoller and Commissioner Christopher is, should we move forward with? Should we move forward with creating a Department of Corrections? Being that option two or option three both create a Department of Corrections. Is that something that we direct staff to do? Do we also direct staff to um reach out to? Bospic about who they would recommend um to come in um either as a consultant or to do a le map study to get the answers to all the questions that we have. Um that we don't have answers to. Um and in that meantime, uh whether option three is. You know, the Taj Mahal of of that, but we we focus uh our questions for. Either the le map or a consultant of find us the way through that that provides. The best value keeps us our risks, risks as low as possible. Enhances our operations and provides the quality of services that our constituents want.
I would say for me, I don't, I don't disagree with anything you've said there. But any directive you give staff needs to include. A unwinding of their current directive, which is moving to Norcore. So if you're giving, if you're telling them. Okay, no more of that directive. We now want you to do this. I don't want an add-on. I will not be in support of voting for any option, even the ones I said we should do. If their current underlying directive is to close the jail load in order. So if we unwind that one and say, okay, you have a new directive. Your new directive is we're gonna create a Department of Corrections. We're gonna go with option either two or three. We're gonna hire a consultant. And then we're gonna figure it out. I can vote yes on that, but if they're still under the current directive, they're standing it right here today. Which is close the jail and move to Norcore. I can't be a yes. That directive needs to be removed.
And I think we landed on this because at that time, that was our option. So that's what we wanted to investigate. So the, the creation of the other options that fell out of this. Gives us more investigation to do because of that. That's. How I feel about it. And as far as creating the Department of Corrections and some things, I know those are legalities that we have to do. But I don't know what the timing, correct timing is for that.
An org chart and um position descriptions, at least to start with and and create that. Now, this is kind of down in the weeds question. I believe it takes a resolution uh to move it to the commissioners. In addition to creating a Department of Corrections, separate acts. But I don't know if you're narrowing on option two and three, if. Or starting with option, these are clarifying questions, not statements. Then we would also need a resolution drafted, which, which has already been provided uh not to you, but uh the. Moving the jail under the commissioners, under any of the option two or option three. Um and I don't know if that. If that happens after you have a consultant come in, after you've answered all the questions, or if, you know, when the timing of that piece. But because part of that um. At the, one of the things we had to do collective bargaining is is move the contract for the corrections officers from the sheriff, which would be a sidebar. Agreement to the commissioner. So there's just some technicalities that at some point I'm gonna need some clarification on. I'm not asking.
So if you're asking for my, the motion I would make and or the motion I would second. Would be something in the neighborhood and I'm not making it. I'm just. Stating what it would be, would be to direct staff to. Uh no longer be under the uh charge of closing the jail. Uh but to transition uh to the, looking into the option two or three. Hiring a consultant, seeing what it would take to do Department of Corrections. Um bring the consultant in so that we can ask them questions to research for the nurses, blah, 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 blah. So that we can come up with better budget numbers, better uh staffing numbers. And move forward with there, but but in either case, it would form a Department of Corrections. So you might as well move along with that in parallel. Something of that.
What's your refine of that? What is your refine of that?
Oh, I haven't written it. I mean, I had no idea how today was gonna go, so I didn't, usually I would be prepared with possible motions and everything else.
You gotta buy better chairs for you?
Or or not make me send it this long.
I haven't seen the twenty-four hundred dollar office chair in a few years, but.
The the uh motion today probably should be more of a continuation motion of the first one. And that would be refine the options by directing staff to reach out to provide the consultant. And to investigate what it takes because we know legally we'll have to do the Department of Corrections.
I guess the piece is missing and and maybe it's missing. Potentially is during all of that work under any of these scenarios, does it stay under the direct control of the sheriff? Or does that transition? To the commissioners while all that works taking place, because that's a pretty key point, I think, that people.
That was gonna be where I was gonna go with the conversation.
This is new.
The direction that we gave staff in the motion. Option three was not part of that. Um I understand that that. And option five was not on the table and and staff understood that, but option three was not part of that. And I think option three could be. A short-term solution. It could be a permanent solution. Um I'm not saying with all of the bars numbers and everything and this body scanner and everything else. I think that that that. But that could be uh the beginning of where we go. Um I understand that the Commissioner Christopher doesn't want to be, I'm gonna use the word pigeonholed. Into directing staff that the end is option two or option one. I think for personally though, I want to keep those as. The options or or as potentials to continue to refine. Um once we get the answers to all of the questions.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, just for clarification, I don't have a, a problem with them being an option. I have it being the directive. The current directive is close the jail and transition to Norcore. So under that directive, I can't vote yes on anything. If you remove the directive of close the jail and move it to Norcore. And now we're gonna transition into something else, you might have my vote.
Thank you. That that I'm, as always, I'm always trying to find the middle ground and and how we can, we can. Agree with at the end of the day. Um so the, you're, that helps. The question is, is do we create the Department of the Corrections? Because to me, it's, we need a transition plan. We need to bring someone in from the outside. Um we need to change the supplemental budget. You know, all the original motion, all the original pieces of my original motion that were in there that that are still. Hurt in it, I think that we have to do if we move forward with with the options. And I think, I think we can all get, like, if that's the direction, creating the Department of Corrections, bringing in the outside, whether it's a le map or whatever. The question for the board is. The timeframe, creating the Department of Corrections, do we want to do that within thirty days, sixty days? Do we need to find, I mean, because really what it comes down to is is who's gonna manage it? Who's gonna be? And are we going to hire a a person? Or are we gonna hire a transition manager, somebody from the outside? And that would be the questions.
I, you know. I would hope we don't put a timeframe on it like April twelfth. Uh we just put it at the earliest available convenience kind of a thing, so we're not under the gun. Uh with the full intention that we're gonna go as fast as we can to pacify. Um that, but I would also. Ask. It worries me to, for the board, just to pick a a date. Of which they're gonna take over management of the jail without at least having conversations with the current manager of the jail. Um to see if they're willing to work with us uh on a transition. Um that can be cleaner. I mean, maybe they're not, and maybe you just, nope, it's Friday the twelfth. Um but they might be going, yeah, let's, let's sit down, let's talk about it. Let's, I can teach you a few things. I can tell you a few things. Let's work this out. We'll figure something out for thirty days down the road kind of thing. And then set your date on when to take the jail. I don't think he needs a a note today on when we're taking the jail. Um I think if he has a directive to move forward, we can then have conversations. To figure out when the transition time is down the road with that conversation.
Commissioners Zoller, you are the, sorry, Commissioners Zoller, you're the lead for this project. Um what would your recommendation be?
Trying to pick a date is is hard. It's a really hard thing because we have. Differing degrees of timeframes we have to meet. We have contracts with the cities that we have to meet. Uh we have uh the medical. Contract that we have to, has to expire. We have to figure out how to transition to that. So putting a dead deal date on something is gonna be very hard today. We need to know all of those things that are gonna transition. And move through them in a process. Um can we create something that? Has the language of earliest possible date in it. Um all the meanwhile, develop. Um close out the contracts, re-up the contracts that we need to do. Create the Department of Corrections. And any other of the steps that we need to take care of because we have varying dates on those steps. Um I think the longest date that I've heard out there of things we'd have to transition is a hundred and twenty days. Is that correct?
At face value, if we were going to change operations um and have to adjust our contracts with the cities. Um the termination date would be a hundred and twenty days.
So that's kind of my point is they are not, are they currently under contract with us? Are they currently under contract with the sheriff? Would that cancellation and contract change be whatever the transition date? Of ownership of the jail needs to be?
The commissioners sign all contracts. Um. So.
That doesn't affect date, okay.
Um and each contract, there, there is one con, City of White Salmon does not have a current contract.
We don't care about them.
Um. City of Bingen, um City of Goldendale has an automatic annual renewal of a contract. Um City of Bingen goes out to twenty-six, I believe. Um and. Then the medical services provider is a thirty-day termination notice. So there are varying. Um contract termination dates within there.
He said, I'm fine with the earliest convenience. And then we can, you know, keep this thing moving. I'm not looking to kick the can down the road at all, but I also don't want to set a date and then. Be into some rush to do it that we make mistakes.
No, just again, clarifying question. I don't have a position on this. Just trying to, because Jen's gonna get busy on the budget and I'm gonna be the one moving some of this stuff forward.
Director of Corrections personnel.
No, I didn't say that. No, no, nope, nope, didn't say that is um. To your point you made a little while ago. So the the timeline's gonna be organic, whether the sheriff, there's a. A future date with the sheriff or where the commissioners take it next Tuesday by resolution, take the supervision of the jail. Better way to phrase it. The timelines under either those is gonna be organic either way. It's gonna take what it takes to get it done. It's just, it is that timeline um. Developing underneath the supervision of the commissioners or underneath the supervision of the sheriff and the commissioners are putting pieces. In place such as Department Corrections, job descriptions, finding a consultant. At the same time, I mean, and and one of them is um so I can get the unions some finality. We are in. We are in um the negotiations and I think it just, so it.
How do you, how are you gonna do union negotiations if? Uh let's say we stick with option three. But there's org chart changes because we no longer have. Uh uh chief deputy, we have a director that it could be a pay difference. Which would mean an org chart difference because it's a pay grade, whatever. There may need to be a. Uh a job title change of one of them to chief financial analyst or something. Or a clerical admin, or don't, don't we have to come up with those decisions before we get into negotiations?
That's why as much clarity as I can get, we can map these out and sit down with the union bargaining team and and figure out what we need to do. I mean.
And that, our decision on, just to, sorry to interrupt, but. Our decision on, let's take an org chart and decide this one needs to say and this one needs to go and this one needs to turn into a financial person or whatever. That could all be done in an executive because it's union related, correct?
The discussion, correct. I mean, one extreme to this whole thing could be the union contract for corrections expires in a year. We'd be in negotiations in nine months. I mean, if if there's a whole bunch of uh changes need to be made. The the collective bargaining teams could just say, let's just.
Do it now.
Let's just do it now. We have five contracts that expire at the same time. That's insanity. Um so it might be a good time to to switch that, or it could be not as complicated as we think. And we just agree to get from here on a sidebar to when it expires and then incorporate the changes into into the next bargaining.
Right, I just don't want to have to get through negotiations if we don't even really know what employees.
One of the primary things of all this is who who's in control and collective bargaining, the sheriff. Signs it with the commissioners and just some clarification there. It may be a mute point, not, we don't need to discuss it, it just. Uh I think it's gonna be a question asked probably by the union, probably by the employees, who who's, and at what point does that happen? If we don't know, we don't know.
So it sounds more like maybe to be really clear, we should do um the resolution for Department of Corrections. With the direction to staff to move through the steps to finalize it. To bring in everything we need to finalize uh with the consultant.
So to start to, to start to, okay, I think I.
And I'm, again, just fine with that as long as this board removes the current. Mandate to the employees that they are under the directive to close the jail and ship it to Norcore. That needs to be verbally removed. From this board.
Trying to work here while listening. The jail wouldn't close, it would change. Under one of these, under option two, it would change. It wouldn't be a total closure. And before I forget.
Under forty words or less. Your last one was like seventeen paragraphs.
Which one?
The motion to close. It was, it was, it was a page and a half of this.
It was right here. Nice try.
Point type.
Sorry, you're coming to save me. And before I forget, while he's working, um um. Whatever process it takes to get a consultant on board to address the issues you want addressed, at whatever time we get to address those issues. I will bring them back. We will bring them back to you. To reconfirm with them in a discussion with the board on those questions as opposed to. Us trying to remember what was said today and then a month from now.
I want everything.
Yeah.
It's me, I want everything in this room. I think if the public sees everything. They're much better.
Well, another advantage is in a month from now or two weeks from now, the questions may change a little bit. There may be more, there may be less. And I think it's before we pay a consultant to go off and answer questions, we ought to have the questions of the day at the time, so. From you three.
I'm having a hard time trying to add what you want into what it is. Um.
You, you could word it as. Something of the fact of just removing. Um we are removing the current directive you are under. Um to close the jail and transitioning it to this. And I'm fine with that. It's just that directed piece has to be.
Okay, so let me. Let me read the original. My original, which I don't know if the, the minutes were perfect on it. Was to direct staff to move forward with negotiations with Norcore or providing for providing jail services for Clickatack County. We did that. That has been complete. Staff and Commissioners all are further authorized to negotiate with the cities of White Salmon, Benjen and Goldendale for jail services that are currently provided. That has, I assume, occurred. And some we have nego- we have, we have discussed, but we, we have not created negotiations, but again. The contracts are already in place with the, with the county, not the sheriff. It's with the county. So we currently have those in place. The B O C C is directing staff to prepare supplemental budget, removing the jail subdepartment and moving the funds into a non-departmental. We've not done that, but if we create a Department of Corrections, that would be its own subdepartment. Rather than a non-department, right?
Would it be a subdepartment or a new?
General Fund Department.
Correct.
Moving the funds into.
That would not be a part of the five point two anymore.
I, I would kick that to the finance committee to work through the accounting details of, of that.
Okay, the B O C C is directing staff to take all necess- all steps necessary to remove jail services from the sheriff's department. Bring forward a transition plan and a resolution of the B O C C. And it says for adoption April second. Remove all that. And then it says the intent will be to close the jail no later than April twelfth, twenty twenty-four, but we've, we've had the negotiations, so that's gone.
As I said, I think it can be.
Okay.
I, I don't think it needs to be that wordy and especially if you're gonna read this anything again.
No, no, I, I, I'm creating a new one, but again, some of it was done, some of it was not done. I believe that all of it that we directed you to do was in the best interest of the county so that we could. Create this, which gave us the information. So art, part of the, part of the original that we need to have that. Final decision before I make a motion is. The B O C C is directing staff to take all necessary steps to remove jail services from the sheriff's department. Which means that we would be creating the Department of Corrections underneath the B O C C. I might have missed the conversation while I was writing, but. Was that the decision? And I think we need to have that as part of the motion. And if.
Yes, that's.
That's. Commissioner Christopher?
If you're gonna put that in there, I need to see how it's worded because again, I understand the intent. And I, I also understand the. Ramifications for voting yes on something that says that.
You could say.
Because the news media is going to take that. A little differently. So yes, I guess I would say let's, let's see how you word this. You, you, you word things a little interesting sometimes. And sometimes I can't vote yes just because of one word.
Department of Corrections with the intention of assuming.
I know, I, I think.
They say it could be as, it, I mean, it's really a simple motion. It would be. A motion. To remove. The May twenty-eighth directive. From staff. Give them a new directive.
Well, that's what.
You look into option two and three. I know, but you word smash. And I, it would be nice to see the motion without the word smithing.
Just keep without the words.
No, don't, don't go there. Just.
So I'm just, remember, I'm just making, this is.
Sorry to everybody that didn't get lunch at.
This is, this is the crazy part of government that we can't talk outside of this meeting room, which makes things really interesting. Okay, so this is just a draft. And I do like what we included some of this in the.
Just for clarification, if you say a sentence that I don't like, should I interrupt you at the exact sentence you said, you say it?
Let's just read my start because I got more to go.
Thank you.
Then we can.
So it would be a motion to direct staff to prepare documents for the creation of a Department of Corrections. Via resolution under the control of the Board of County Commissioners.
No issues.
Staff is directed to seek a consultant to continue the review of the options within the corrections report without the requirement of the jail closure. I was having, this is the part I was having a hard time. How would you?
I would like to clarify option two or three in that, but yeah, go ahead. That's what they're directed to do.
Read that second part again.
Staff is directed to seek a consultant to continue the review of the options within the corrections report.
Review of options two and three. Cause that takes option one out of it.
The review of options two and three. It's in the corrections report without the requirement of the jail closure. The, I, I'm trying to get that.
You're good.
So it, it doesn't sound right to me, but again, I have my own way of speaking.
Or immediate, without the option of immediate jail closure.
Without the requirement of the immediate. Would that work without the requirement of the immediate jail closure? Because that's, so that's in essence, what she's trying to do is remove this April twelfth date.
I think you would need to remove the requirement of the jail closure, not immediate, because immediate means you can still close it tomorrow. Under that directive.
I mean, again, this is, what we're doing is making a motion direct staff to do work. That's what we're really doing here. What really happens is what's in a resolution. And so what I'm trying to do is direct staff. And on top of that, our original motion, which, you know, we're kind of supplementing. Is directing staff to prepare supplemental budget, removing the jail subdepartment and moving the funds into the new Department of Corrections. Would you agree with that as direction of staff?
Don't have a problem with that, but the word immediate is another.
I took the immediate.
You needed in the motion with all these little individual directives? Or just a? I mean, that's to me, it's, it's the wordy part.
I prefer it because of the import on this, but that's just me.
Because the, the problem to me is you, you start listing all the things you're supposed to do. Now you forgot this one.
Well, if you want, I can add a catch.
Now we gotta do a separate directive to get him to do that one.
I think. I agree with both of you. I'm, I'm a former mayor. I agree with both of you. Is. Some things I think have to be in a directive to, to create a resolution, moving. The control of the jail to the B O C C from the sheriff should be a directive. It shouldn't look like staffs doing that on their own, bringing. A resolution, resolution to do that. The supplemental, that's clear. We know we have to do that, create a. For HR to create an org chart, job descriptions. We know we need to do that, whether that's in the directive or not, or in the motion or not, it has to, it has to get done. So if it's in there, great, but I think some of those things are, are.
Okay.
Pretty monumental decisions that should be captured.
In the motion?
In the motion.
Okay.
For historical purposes, if nothing else.
How do you, how do you feel about? The statement Commissioners Zoller shall still be the lead on this project and staff is asked to proceed with all haste to accomplish these goals.
I've probably. I, I don't personally want to lead. I want everything done in this room with three commissioners that all get away and on every decision. And that's whether there's three options, four options or five options. I don't want a lead working outside of the public's view, whether that's me, her, or anybody else. I don't want to lead. I just, we're three commissioners. We work in here with staff and make decisions.
How about staff is asked to proceed with all haste to accomplish this?
Absolutely.
Hey.
And I, I hope I didn't offend with the lead, but I think the people. Trust.
Yeah.
Isn't there on both sides, right?
Well, I mean, we always have, we always have in essence a lead, like, you know, whether it's the airport or behavioral health or whatever it is, there's always a lead because. Staff has to. That staff has to have someone to bounce stuff off of. And, you know, there's a million little decisions that.
We can, I'm fair game to have a twenty minute update every week in our Tuesday meeting.
Okay, so the only other thing is.
If you need a question, come, come forward on Tuesday, ask a question.
Okay, thank you. The last one I have is, is we're, we're seeking a consultant to continue the review of options two and three. If we are pulling this within the, with underneath the Board of County Commissioners, we should also include in here the direction of staff to seek. An interim jail manager, something like that. You understand where I'm going with that? How would you like that word?
See, that's the hard part. I, I think you're a hundred percent correct. But there's going to be debate on whether you have a jail consulting firm being the manager for the next six months or. If you're reaching out to a headhunter to try to find somebody, you might have somebody here locally. Who's more than qualified that was to potentially step down from whatever job they're doing. And be your management person for the next six months until you can find a permanent one. Who knows?
So do we want to leave that with staff to try to make that recommendation or do we want to make, because this is policy?
That's what I'm saying. We need to look into our options, but I don't want to pigeonhole myself and quit shop.
Excuse me, maybe we would look into that. I would look into that. And then if I'm gonna have access to you every Tuesday, which I think I do anyway. I could bring that and say, it looks like it's going to be, these are the. The ones that are going to work at this point, whatever they are, and then get feedback from the commissioners. I mean, we meet every Tuesday, so we don't go.
No, I just wanted to add too, though, if we get to a point, we can't ask the commissioners even via email. A question to be able to move forward till Tuesday that will stall this. Week by week. Email is. Public record. It is transparent. I just don't. I just want to make sure that the board understands that this could get stalled if we have to wait to ask a question on a Tuesday.
Can you send it through Elise and she sends it to all three of us?
But we can't answer. That's, that's the problem.
We can answer it. I just can't share it with you.
We, we could answer it individually and say, well, this is, I would choose option one of your three options. And then she says, I can, I would choose option two. And then Jake sends the email that says, well, I would choose option two first and then go to. Well, now you have consensus because two of you said option. We have no idea what the other one said. But you do.
Now, I, yes, that's a bad.
Built too close?
If it, if it. We'll make it work. We'll make it work. You want to transparent, we'll make it work. How about staff?
I would appreciate if we tried to make it work without reaching out. And you know what? If you do have to reach out to somebody to get an answer, reach out to the one you think probably won't like what you're gonna tell them. To see if they're on board with it. And that might change.
Or have a workshop.
Between the two, based on what they.
What about just allowing staff to bring forward a plan for the management of the jail? And then that leaves it open enough.
Right, but are they gonna bring forward or is the consultants supposed to be bringing forward?
Work.
The consultant is working on.
Options.
The options, the jail report, that's.
We have to work on the Department of.
We, we're talking, this is the actual physical.
Right, but that's my point. I don't want staff to bring forward the plan. I want to work with staff to develop the plan.
So then do you, I, God, the simple thing is, is do we want it to be? A person hired or do we want to allow staff the option to potentially go out for a contract for management?
I think ultimately it's going to be both. Once you create a Department of Corrections, just fast forward. You're gonna want your, you're gonna, you're gonna want somebody at some level, manager, director. Jail commander, whatever you're gonna call them. But in the interim, I mean, we could find. You know, we looked out with Scott and found a highly qualified applicant fairly quickly and, and thankfully so. It could be, it could drag on for a couple of months.
Long term, I am not a fan of some desk jockey at some consulting firm in Wenatchee being the manager of our local jail. If that had to be a temporary solution, because we didn't have any other temporary solutions, then that's a different story. Long term, I would like whoever our jail manager slash director of correctional facilities, whatever. To be somebody local or is moving here to operate. So that's just where I'm.
It's where that happens is we create the org chart, we create the position, we post the position.
In the interim, if we need a professional services.
I think, I think it's going to be, so how about staff is directed to put out an RFQ for an interim jail manager? And then that jail manager can work with staff and HR to develop the org chart and everything else. Because usually when you're coming in and you're changing things and you're building things, you want someone from the outside who's going to be here. Blow everything up and then we go. And then the person who comes in to run it for the rest of time, they don't have that underneath you. It's that transition planning.
And I like the idea of somebody outside. Giving us their professional opinion before the person inside comes in with theirs. Cause they might have different ideas on policy.
Would that be an RFQ commissioner? We're just looking for an individual to, on a contract basis for short term or whatever, whatever term that winds up being. To help us do that.
But I would also at the same time throw out. The potential position opening.
Yeah.
That if anybody's interested, reach out, because then we might not need the interim consultant manager.
Which is why we possibly can create the Department of Corrections, create. The lead position under whatever we want to call it, so we can get that posted.
Yeah, ASAP.
And then parallel with that, bring somebody on to help run day to day.
When they ask, when does the job start? We may not be able to answer the question yet, but.
And after that RFQ, that person could stay, could transition to be the permanent.
So how about this? Based on what you both said, staff is directed to find a consultant to work as an interim jail manager. Not leaves it open for HR to find the right way if it's, if you need. Staff is directed to find a consultant to work as an interim jail manager.
But I would also add. I, I would like the option that if there's somebody. If one of these fine, badgy people sitting in our office wants to go on sabbatical for the next three months, I want to, I want to give them the option to do it.
Well, that is, that's finding somebody to.
They're not consultant though.
They could be.
That's a.
As long as the option is there for somebody local, I'm, okay, as long as that's the way you're.
I mean, as long as you understand.
I got it.
Is there anything else you'd like?
Mike volunteered, by the way.
So the motion is have HR do something. I can do it. I could do it.
Dave, you guys gonna build a jail soon over there? Jail slash dog shelter?
Okay. Mind if I?
Yes.
Read this as a draft. To direct staff to prepare documents for the creation of a Department of Corrections via resolution under the control of the Board of County Commissioners. Staff is directed to seek a consultant to continue the review of options two and three within the corrections report without the requirement of the jail closure. To direct staff to prepare a supplemental budget, removing the jail subdepartment and moving the funds into a new department under the Department of Corrections. Staff is asked to proceed with all haste to accomplish this. And staff is directed to find a consultant to serve as an interim jail manager. I'm gonna move this, the haste to tell the end, but that's.
Need the word consultant to act as a jail guard or?
To serve as an interim jail.
Or just to find someone to serve.
I was gonna say, the word consultant to me is to find. Someone, an individual, a company, something, and they're just not consultant.
I'm just talking about that, the piece on the interim manager, whether it be a consultant, a contractor, whether.
Right, I, I, that's why my only catch with the whole thing is the word consultant.
Right, okay. Staff is directed to find an individual to serve as an interim jail manager.
An option or something.
Which I would bring to you. As a hiring authority.
But that leaves the door open to many different avenues, not just, oh, I'm not a consultant, so I can't apply.
How do you feel about that? I just made a couple of small changes.
I would like it a little bit stronger about the. Previous directive, but I, I would accept that the way it's working.
Commissioners, how do you?
I'm good with it.
Who's getting hungry?
We go to lunch and then come back? If you plan on making a motion. If you plan on making a motion, I would. Ask for the chair's prerogative to advise. Everyone, but first before I do, I will ask. Um, our staff, are we still on our notices for our Thursday workshop notifying? That all public comment is allowed via written blah, blah, blah in all of our postings? On the agendas and whatever, so as long as we have, and we put this in, I put this in place last year. That as long as we notice that we are taking written public comment. Uh, before a workshop, whether that's an afternoon workshop or a Thursday workshop. Uh, we are fully legal allowed and able to take a vote during a workshop. Uh, we don't have to have. Verbal public comment to take a vote, so I already had one text that said, you can't vote today because, and, and. I just wanted to clarify that that is not actually true.
I can also clarify one other thing, on Tuesday, when I made the motion, I did not make a motion to adjourn, I made a motion to recess.
Anybody wanted to check that if they thought a motion was out of. Right, it's posted, so that's the legal part. It only, because public comment before you make a motion only has to be written comment. It does not have to be verbal, a lot of counties don't do verbal comment at all, we do.
And in all honesty, we accept written comment all the time, anytime someone emails the BOCC, it gets forwarded to us.
Can you read it one more time?
Yep, I can read it one more time.
One more time.
Okay. A motion to direct staff to prepare documents for the creation of a Department of Corrections via resolution. Under the control of the Board of County Commissioners. Staff is directed to seek consultant to continue the review of options two and three within the corrections report without the requirement of a jail closure. To direct staff to prepare supplemental budget, removing the jail subdepartment and moving the funds into a new department under the Department of Corrections. Staff is directed to find an individual to serve as an interim jail manager. And the BOCC staff is requested, the BOCC is requesting staff to proceed with all haste to accomplish this.
Can I add or? Yeah, I would like something in there that the board is going to be reaching out to the sheriff's office to see if the sheriff will. Work with us on this transitioning kind of a thing, but I don't know whether.
It would be working, reaching out with staff, because remember, we want all.
That's true, because we don't have a lead.
We don't have a lead, so the lead can't do, do it with the sheriff unless you.
Catch me in my own catch twenty-two.
To clarify, that kind of contradicts. Moving in haste to hire a jail manager and a consultant, so what am I asking the sheriff's department to do, see if they want to? Be hired as interim jail manager, I'm not quite sure. Gotcha, gotcha, okay, gotcha.
I would hope that we are all professionals, uh, we are all here to serve the public and we're all public servants and. The sheriff's office would of course lend any hand, because they care about the. Employees and they care about the inmates and they would do everything in their power to ensure a smooth transition. That would just be an expectation being that we're all caring individuals and we do this because, because we do care.
And again, the sheriff's been very helpful to Jen and I through this process. Opened and, um, so.
Yeah, I'm good, read it.
All right, unless, would you like to make the motion, Commissioner Christopher?
You wrote it, I'm not gonna make a motion, it's yours. I, I offered earlier, that was like half an hour ago.
You can make a motion anytime, sir. Madam Chair. I would propose a motion to direct staff to prepare documents. For the creation of a Department of Corrections via resolution underneath the board, control of the Board of County Commissioners. Staff is directed to seek a consultant to continue the review of options two and three of the corrections report. Without the requirement of a jail closure. We would also like to direct staff to prepare a supplemental budget, removing the jail subdepartment. And moving the funds into a new department under the Department of Corrections. Staff is directed to find an individual to serve as an interim jail manager. And that the BOCC is requesting staff to proceed with all haste to accomplish this action.
There's one word in there after you read it that I want to change. All second for the sake of discussion and a friendly amendment.
Motion and a second discussion.
What's the friendly amendment?
The directive of the jail closure, could you read that last couple of words again? I got a word changed, there's one word that popped in my head that would work better. Then is no longer under the directive of the jail closure.
Staff is directed to seek a consultant to continue the review of options number two and three within the corrections report. Without the requirement of the jail closure.
The board requirement. I would change requirement to directive.
Without the directive.
And then I am happy as a pig in.
Okay, I, uh, let me, let me add one more bit to it, if, if a friendly amendment.
No friendly amendments.
Well, no, I, because I understand where you're going. Because you use the word directive, um, what if it, what if it were to say, within the corrections report without the directive? Of the previous motion from.
Perfect.
The twenty-nine.
Done.
Whatever, March twenty, thank you, I wanted to say.
Yes, that, that is my friendly amendment, I still have a small piece of discussion.
And the corrections.
Once we get the amendment thing. And thank you for facilitating that amendment.
And I will read it one more time before the.
Yeah, I, I. I will say that I don't like how we got here today. And I've made my decisions today based on the choices I have before me. Uh, based on how we got here today. Um, but the decisions that I made in voting for this resolution. Is the best available option I have before me today. So with that. Do we need to vote on the friendly amendment before the main motion? Or is it because it's a friendly amendment, we don't need to vote on the amendment?
I think it, as long as the, as long as I accept the friendly amendment, which.
Enough.
Um, I added to the friendly amendment, so I of course accept.
Enough, just wanted clarification for both of us and all of us, so motion and second, we had discussion.
Are you done with the discussion or?
Remember, I only got a few more months to, to sit on my.
Drag it out.
To drag it out. I just think that these decisions affect the community, uh, they affect staff. They affect us. And they're never taken lightly, um, we don't do these in jest. I firmly believe that this is the start of the repair. Of what has occurred within the county, and I know that likely no one is going to be happy. With this decision, um, which usually tells me that you're making the right decision. Uh, because it is a compromise and the fact that all three could find compromise on the board. Um, says that it, it takes a lot to get here. I think we've got a long ways to go and we'll still be having this discussion after I'm gone. Uh, but I want to reaffirm that my commitment is to continue to, to work on this project. Um, through the rest of my term and that. I think we can do great things still, uh, within our Department of Corrections and. I really appreciate all of the work that staff has put into this. Um, you've gotten messages from me and if late at night and everything else trying to. Uh, make sure that, that we move this forward and your dedication to Clickatack County does not go unnoticed. And I would also like to say that I, the dedication of our corrections officers. And our sheriff's deputies and, and our sheriff, uh, does not go unnoticed, uh, as well. Um, I think we all care, uh, about the, this county, we all live here for a reason. And I would include in that the cities, um, you guys do a great job. And I hope this is something that we can continue to work together in partnership towards, so that we can, uh. We can get to the, the best outcome possible. Now I'm ready to.
Okay, now I have to say thanks. I just wanted to tell everybody thank you today and especially staff. Um, I've told you before, I can't thank you enough for the hours and the dedication you've put in. Uh, very, very thoughtful, well thought out, grindingly thought out. And I want to thank, I'm thankful for the meeting we had today, for the stability in this room and being able to have conversations between. We, we had a good day today between ourselves and I'm thankful we could come to resolve here, and this is what our board should be. I appreciate moving forward with our county, we have a great county, we have great partners and thank you for coming. Thank you for working through it with staff, you're not done yet, you'll be on the hook again, and thank you for coming today to support our efforts.
I will, um. Speak again if I may, and I would say I agree with you. That between us, for the most part today, was how it should be every day. And I hope this can be the way it is every day.
Thank you, so I'm gonna stop right now, so all those in favor? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Are we gonna take up our next item?
What, which is?
We have another item on the.
Was there something else? Yeah, it can't matter, he was hanging out.
What, wasn't there another item on the agenda? Oh, thank you, I had no idea. Well, let's let them go first. Oh, what can I get, updates? I guess I can give an update, I had a, a very. Very good day yesterday in Salem, um, met with, I have like fifteen legislators. Um, for the transportation package for the bridge. And, uh, I've got a lot of hope that, that this next go around, we will get the commit. From Oregon or a good portion of it, and so that's.
That's good news, because I have a feeling here real soon, they're gonna realize they don't have the money they think they do, and then they're gonna waffle, so if you get a commitment.
Well, what we, what we're doing is, is we're gonna run our own bill for the hundred and five million, uh, remaining from Oregon, but then Oregon is actually like. It's really amazing, um, like, trying to come up with the money for this bridge. It's like the, the peas just keep falling in the right place, because at the federal level, we got the infra dollars because of the big package that went through. Washington State had a transportation package that we were able to be a part of, and Oregon only does a transportation package like once every ten years. And it's like.
That's my point, and if they, if they commit to it. You're good.
So we're, we're, we're taking both sides, we're gonna have our own bill, um, but then we're also working on being and put into the transportation package as well, which. It's not gonna be an easy fight, but I think with the amount of progress that we're making, that we don't have any of the issues of the I five, we don't have the. This going on, there's a, an amazing chance that we could get the, the funding secured.
It's good, one positive thing going forward.
The, the whole day was a positive thing.
There's a lot of positive things going forward in this county, it's just.
What's great about the bridge though is when it's right, it's right, and that's a huge project. And it keeps moving forward, sometimes we just struggle with the smallest project.
What is the latest, based on your, uh, funding projections? And or funding shortfalls on what the estimated tolling is going to be? When we started, we were thinking, I mean, when we first started and people were talking about a bridge, we were talking, you're gonna have ten dollar tolls. Um, but now this funding is coming through, more funding and more funding, so is there a latest projection on?
Where, where we're at is if we went out and just took loans out for five hundred and twenty million. It would be eleven dollars and twenty-five cents each time you cross the bridge in a car, on truck, car. Um, for every dollar we get in grants, that goes down. If we get the full funding from Washington and Oregon, we would be doing a TIFI loan for seventy million. And so the money that we were currently getting to, goes into that TIFI loan to, to provide the, the bump. Then the money that the port currently gets, that they use some of it for maintenance on the current bridge, they take a little bit off, they're. So much, it's not very much because they're, they're having to do such heavy maintenance, because the continues to decline. We'll be able to, there will likely be one small bump, um, if around the time the bridge opens and that's it. And I'm not, we're talking a small bump, I mean, the fact that we could build a five hundred and twenty million dollar bridge and still be paying, you know. Close to only two dollars, uh, for vehicles is amazing, and then when we designed the TIFI alone. There's small bumps every five years in the rate because inflation and everything else. Uh, but yeah, if, if everything happens just the way we want it to, that's it. Oh, and the bigger thing, oh, forgot to tell you, we received, uh, our investment grade credit rating. On the bridge, which for an organization that's been in existence less than a year, that has no actual employees, that's a huge. Huge impact, so that by itself makes us eligible for the TIFI loan. So the TIFI loan's really low and investment grade, and so if we need, like, say the, the grant dollars come in, like, later than we hope. We can still go out on the private market, get loans. Being an investment grade, so it's, it's a huge, huge week for, for the bridge. So anyways, I just wanted to, to mention that, um, that those are good things. And I, I, and finally, I just wanted to mention, um, I had all sorts of things prepared for today on, based on. How things could possibly go, and I want to thank both of you for your professionalism. And your decor and, um, being willing to compromise. I don't think anybody got exactly what they wanted, but I think we're making a first good step, and by bringing in someone to help staff. Um, I know it's gonna cost us some money, but I think it'll be money well spent.
And staff has so much other stuff to get to now.
Well, we gotta start on the budget.
I will be very curious when we get into the discussion of org charts. And who's running the books and all that kind of stuff that, that could get interest, how many nurses?
Yeah, I think things will.
They, they need to, they need to be able, whatever this department is, needs to be able to. Not only pay the bills, order Band-Aids, but they need to be able to in themselves. Renegotiate contracts with the cities, go out with the Department of Corrections, bring in revenue sources, write grants. And if that's a control board operator, okay, but I don't think it is. So I'll be curious to have those conversations.
I think, you know, we've, we've had conversations. Amongst staff, I think primarily about realigning how we look at the finance package. And like a, a, more of a finance department rather than each individual group doing their own, you know, having an office.
Right, so whether it's an employee that does finance that's actually in the jail.
Doesn't, yeah.
Or a person that's financed that works in the finance department. It's gonna be somebody that needs to be dedicated towards that.
Or a portion of their time to.
So, right, they need to be the one to do it. Not a corrections deputy or a control ward monitor in person is my point. I need somebody that has the time and effort to go get grants, facilitate contracts. Um, they will pay their own wage. Uh, now whether that is a, how that shifts around org chart boxes, that's the question.
You, you remember, I think in the last two to three years, those were all the discussions that we had during the budget with the sheriff. That, that the sheriff was saying, I'm gonna go do contracts with outside agencies, I'm going to go. Yeah, every year, right?
And beds, even beds were mentioned when I was at, uh, bringing in all.
Yeah, that's what we were talking. I don't know what else I can add other than.
I don't have anything else to add.
No, that's its own issue. I mean, I've got, I've got a whole list of findings.
Contracts. Oh, I don't know if they'll change that much, but to me, there's also. Contracts need to change because like Golden Dale, I'm all for giving you a discount, but I don't need all your inmates that got arrested for stealing a Snickers bar. They're, they're in for a Snickers bar. This is a risk of litigation and, and. Yeah.
This one did.
Oh, and Papa. It's cold. Are you all of this last year when this year?
Really? Don't fit anywhere. See, I'm down fifteen now. Yeah. Uh. So I didn't know, being that we couldn't communicate, I didn't know how the chair was going to open it up. Or if it was going to open up to community or, or public comment. I think. Um, I, I have the, the distinct impression that there's going to be a fair amount of blowback. And we didn't talk about that elephant in the room of option five or whatever. And so this was part of my preparation.
It has, it has changed a lot. I know. I, I think some people would like to hear the humanities issue addressed more, but I feel like. There's so many places we have to be so careful.
Well, that's, we've, we've said it all the way along. There's a lot of things that we can't say that everybody else goes out.
And it isn't that we don't.
Want to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this, this kind of brings up issues now that we're at. And you have, now it's like consulting, go through policies, procedures, whatever else. I believe. There needs to be a written policy. But I believe in a lot of written policies, including harassment of our employees. That jail needs a policy on what to do if somebody is court ordered to hospital. And you can't find that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
You will contact the judge every single day.
Yes.
After forty-eight hours, you will notify the B O C C, whatever. Um, to make sure there is an absolute unequivocal policy directive. To. Uh. Keep some of these things from happening. And also I would like, because it is such a. Uh. Sensitive. Department. I would like a way for them to. Um. Circumvent the chain of command. If they, if they were.
They would need to be.
One of the issues we have. Was not a corrections deputy issue. Here doesn't do anything. Right, but if the director refuses. The, if the, if the corrections officers are telling the director, we need to do this and the director's like, no. And it, it's just like a private in the military. You have a chain of command. But if your supervisor.
But that would be done through policies. If it's health, safety and welfare or something.
They need to have somewhere to go.
But you need, you need to have, you need to have the reasons.
They need to have a way to circumvent somebody who's acting out of order.
Did you know about number one on here? I was gonna, I didn't. I didn't want to throw grenades.
This I said, but we're gonna have to work through and figure all of these things out. With what they currently have. With a consultant to what.
I think we have all the questions in place.
So whatever the consultant brings forward with policies and procedures from elsewhere. To just. Morph it and I, I guess my, my biggest worry is that you guys were gonna set a timeline. That made this such a quick, fast process. That, well, the last one had April twelfth, so I was a little worried.
You, you know that that wasn't.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't. Um, that would cause mistakes. And I know all mistakes. Mistakes kill people. Um. So. This needs open, it needs transparent, there needs as many eyes on it as possible, many opinions. I, I had many people pointing things out in that book. I'm like, oh shit, never even noticed that. Um, more eyes is better. Um, and. So I'm all for fastest possible, that's okay, great. Let's just make sure we're doing it right. That's all I'm asking. Um, cover our bases, don't get in too big of a rush. If that's two weeks, two months, whatever. Let's just do it right. Um, because. The consequences of getting it wrong is not only potentially life and death, but it's political backlash. Um, of. Well, see, now you did it. Now you didn't do it right. And now you got two people on staff. And nobody could cut the rope and that's your fault.
Well, the good thing is, is, you know. When you talk with Stevens County, Pondry County, you know, how they manage, cause you know, they're budget sensitive and how they manage it and now they've created their. Policies and protocols and, and they're willing to send all of them down to us. I think I got a whole list of them, um. You, you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Right, but I, it doesn't, it doesn't mean theirs are perfect.
No, no.
Look at multiples.
But, but again, though, if we, it, absolutely look at multiples, but again, though, like. The accreditation standards that they put together is, is fairly significant. The question is whether or not we can. We can meet those because of the physical settings within the jail. That's usually what pushes a lot of.
And budget.
And, and then the budget as well, or you have a plan to get there or not. But I think when we start down that path, that'll push us towards option two or one or anything if they come in and they're like. Yeah, you're, you're never gonna be able to meet this. You would need option four in order to meet this. And you're like, well, I, I just want to keep the mind open. I think we need to get in there, get the protocols fixed. Have somebody managing that at, at a high, high level with a lot of experience. And then from there we can go and I think it'll be, we should all feel confident in it and I hope, I hope that the staff feels that. That this is something that they can. Feel good about as well. But.
I.
Time will tell.
Part of me. Knowing. A lot of the correction staff and how they feel. Uh. Mistreated by the first motion, I'm hopeful that you don't see a whole bunch of resignations. Because replacing them could be hard.
No, it's one o'clock. I think we've. I'm starting.
Yeah, I need breakfast. I need to get one of my snack bars up here.
Alright. Madam Chair, uh, I don't, we don't have anything we're all gonna be at, right? Uh, no. Uh, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
I'd say the motion.
Motion and a second any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. See you next week.